I'm going to call the Select Board meeting for Wednesday, September 4th, 2024, to order and announce that we will be going into executive session, and we will not return to public session until 6:00 PM.
A move that we go into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21a3, to discuss with respect to collective bargaining for all town unions, and the Chair has determined that open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position. Harwich Employees Association, H.E.A., joint meeting with Brooks Library Board of Trustees. And B, pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in the Port Restaurant versus Town of Harwich matters, as the Chair has declared that an open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town.
In favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Second.
So we didn't get a second, sorry. Second. All in favor, Dawn?
All right.
And I'm an I. I'm going to call the Select Board meeting back to open session. We were in executive session earlier. We took no action on Item A and Item B. We took a vote. And I would like to make sure that everybody understands that, as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping, as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, excuse me, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the Chair prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing no one, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there anybody for a public comment and announcement? You have to come up to the podium and please state your name.
Hi, I'm Bobby Parr. I had a couple of things. Historic society, our ghost tours, which I like to really refer to more as historical figure tours, are coming up. We've had our first one, our hometown Seth Doane attended, and his dad is one of our ghosts. I am as well, and my wife, several of us here. The next one is September 21st. They are at 5:00, 5:30, and 6:00. And then there's two in October, October 19th and 25th.
Cemetery.
Oh, North Howard Cemetery. But you can go on the Harwich Historic site and find out all the info about it. It's a lot of fun. And if you bring your earplugs, it won't bother you when I sing. The second thing I have, I sent this picture because I was getting pizza at the CO, and I had some time, 45 minutes or whatever, so I walked around town, took some pictures, and I posted them. And after Tom Leach liked them, I thought, oh, that must be a good picture, so I'm back and look. So I send it to you, Joe, email. I don't know if you got it, if you passed around. It's a great picture of Brooks Academy. The lighting was really good. So that's my second thing. My question, what can you tell us about the occupancy certification, so we can get back there and do more things, like the ghost tours and exhibits and whatever? And that's all I have, and if you don't mind, I'd like to sit down.
Sure, thank you. In terms of the occupancy, I think, do you have an update in terms of...
I would defer to the board members that are on the stakeholders group.
Dawn or Jeff?
Madam Chair, when last I left the meeting, we had consensus from all four constituent members, including the subcommittee that the Board appointed, to attend a stakeholders meeting with the virtual meeting with the Architectural Accessibility Board for the State on Monday. And I am not sure, because I asked for confirmation from the Office today about what the status was, maybe get the Zoom credentials, but I have not been advised that there is a meeting.
Jeff, do you have anything more on that?
In full transparency, it is important that I believe we, now that asked, I believe that it's important that we're honest. And Dawn, there's more to the story. We both know that. The AAB meeting that was scheduled for, I believe it's Monday, the 9th or the 10th, I'm not quite sure what that date was.
The 9th.
The 9th. I believe there is a request for cancellation of that meeting, and I'm going to ask the Town Administrator if you've heard word, if in fact it has been canceled or it has not.
They've acknowledged receipt of the cancellation request. They have not affirmed it yet.
Okay. Would you like to go down the road of how that was, how that came to be, the request for cancellation, or would you prefer I do it?
I'll defer to Board first.
I'll do it. Understanding, my understanding is that a discussion with Sean Libby and our Town Administrator came to the conclusion that, and please correct me if I'm wrong, came to the conclusion that because we are looking for occupancy of one floor only of the Brooks Academy to allow public usage, that we could handle that request in-house, meaning through our building commissioner. And we did not need to go to the AAB for such waiver. That was what was told to me last week. So my hope is that we post a meeting, the stakeholders, it would be, the Chair would be done, would post our meeting next week on Wednesday, as planned, I believe Wednesday was the date that we had picked. I think that was the date after the AAB meeting. Regardless of whether or not that AAB meeting happens or doesn't happen, I believe that we should move forward with the counsel that we have received, and get our building commissioner on notice, and work as diligently as possible to get that building open as soon as possible. As I understand, there are people looking to do research in that building today, and they are not able to access that building. So my feeling is, and if I could have my way and wave my magic one-person Select Board wand, I would post that meeting on Wednesday. I would have that meeting with the stakeholders. I would form a strategic plan, which will include our building commissioner, and I would move forward with every ounce of energy I have and the stakeholders have to get that building open as soon as possible. Now, there's one piece that I need to add to that, that as soon as construction begins, there will be no occupancy of that building. And I believe at the last stakeholder meeting, everybody understood that to be the end result, that as soon as construction began in that building, that there would be no occupancy. But between right now and then, whenever construction begins, I think it is very important for us to get that building open, and if we can do it locally, I say we do it locally as fast as possible.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Dawn?
I have to say, in governance, I'm not a big fan of the passive voice. Things don't just happen. I was the Chair of that Subcommittee. We left the room with unanimous agreement by all people who attended, that the course of action taken was two-tiered. One was to pursue the AAB request for a waiver to open up with the first floor for the next summer, and the second one was for more durable completion of the building, which would include the possibility that there would be money available for a fall town meeting to do the end construction and have the building completed. Just for the record, no one ever conveyed any of this to me. It's already a fait accompli, apparently. It was already submitted. I was never consulted about whether or not that was a good idea. I did not have the opportunity to ask any of the stakeholders if they thought it was a good idea. My feeling on the subject is, if indeed a building commissioner, who by the way is in Florida at the moment, if indeed a building commissioner has the authority to grant that temporary usage of the first floor, then why didn't we do that last April and have the building open for the past summer? I mean, there's a lot that's not being discussed here that I'm not even familiar with. So I'm, and I'm not going to post a meeting that has no agenda items.
Well, it sounds like you got new information from Sean Libby. Is that correct?
But he was not the motivating factor.
Now, I'm just asking.
The Town Administrator and Sean were sitting two seats away from me in that meeting that we held in late July. We came to unanimous conclusion when we left the room, and that conclusion was not being followed by any of the elected officials or the appointed officials.
May I, Madam Chair?
Sure.
I agree with you, Dawn, 100%. However, right now, this is the cards we have in our hand. And we have an opportunity, and I believe we have a duty, to explore every available chance, choice, opportunity, position, strategy that we can figure out to get that building open. I can't look backwards. That was part of the stakeholder meeting. We can't fix what has already happened. Yes, there should have been a little bit more communication or a lot more communication, but here we are. So I would, I'd be in favor of posting that meeting. I feel there is an agenda item that can be brought forward, and I think that's about all I'll say on that topic tonight. I think everyone now knows where I stand.
My end comment is a question. Under whose authority did we seek to have the meeting canceled?
So why don't you post a meeting and have a, did you want to...
If I may.
Sure.
Monday night, Madam Chair will be in Ireland, probably drinking Guinness and pints and all that fun stuff. While we're here, slaving in the town of Harwich, I want to make sure you have a great time. But Monday night next week, I will be the Chair of that meeting, and this is on my agenda. So we will have more information come Monday night. That is the reason I would suggest posting. We can always cancel the meeting if there's nothing to talk about. But Monday night, I believe, we'll have more information. But if we don't post by Monday night, then we can't have the meeting Wednesday. I personally would like to see the meeting posted on Friday, and then after Monday night, we decide whether or not stakeholder, next stakeholder meeting is worthwhile or not. But if we don't post, we can't have it.
That's still a glib answer. I want to know who made the decision to not seek to attend the meeting that was already scheduled at the state level. We asked them to cancel it. They didn't cancel it on us.
I can't answer that question for you, Dawn.
Pete, you had a comment?
Actually, point of order, Madam Chair. I respect the question presented by Mr. Parr. I respect it through members of the Select Board who are debating the merits of additional meeting. However, this really isn't an agenda item.
It's not an agenda item, so thank you.
You're welcome.
So we'll move on. Anybody else for public comment and announcement?
Hi, I'm Kathy Frazier on Clearwater Drive, and I'm the President of the Great Sand Lakes Association. And Anne has a statement that we would like to read to be on the record, representing our neighborhood.
Okay.
So hi, I'm Anne Prichet from Ten Paradise Path in Harwich. Kathy and I represent the 220 households of the Great Sands Lakes Association in East Harwich, with Kathy as President of the Board of Directors and myself as Vice President. We want to welcome Jason, and I'm going to try to pronounce your last name, Trapanier? Am I close?
Trapanier.
Trapanier. Jason Trapanier, thank you, as the new Water and Wastewater Superintendent. Our Neighborhood Association looks forward to working with you on the searing project for Queen Anne Road. We also want to make sure, as part of the public record, that Dan Pelletier, your predecessor as Water and Wastewater Superintendent, informed us repeatedly that the searing of Queen Anne Road would take place in 2026, and that federal ARPA funds used in the redesign of the CWMP locks in that timeframe. Town Administrator Joseph Powers also confirmed that timeline with us during our annual meeting on June 29th, 2024. Joe asked us at that time to schedule a meeting of our Neighborhood Association in September to include representatives from the Town of Harwich and GHD to discuss specifics about the searing project, including which properties will be involved. We reached out to Joe with potential dates, and we urged, we haven't gotten a date yet back from the town, so we urged the town to schedule such a meeting with us as soon as possible to help property owners prepare for the change. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could, just in response, under the joint meeting agenda, under Item, let me see here, Item, well, if I may, Item F is the Phase III construction project. We've made assurances to the community that we'd be doing community engagement efforts. Now that we're about to do that construction, that's going to be one of the topics to talk about under Phase III. Item G, Great Sand Lakes, same concept. We have representatives here from all the different projects related to GHD, and we want those two topics to be commingled here, so that everybody leaves here tonight knowing two solid timeframes for both community engagement on East Harwich Phase III and community engagement on Great Sand Lakes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for a public comment?
Yes, I just wanted to reiterate that message as well and appreciate the information. I'm a member of the Great Sand Lakes Association on Queen Anne, so, and we have, first of all, appreciate the resources going toward it. Also, welcome any clarity. We've been hearing a lot of conflicting information, so any clarity in terms of which property is going to be affected would be very much appreciated.
And that's one of the reasons we're having this monstrous meeting.
Perfect. And then I know, it's great turnout. The other reason I'm here is also because I'm a member of the newly formed Steering Committee for the Harwich Ponds Coalition. And I know there are several other members here. I don't know if people want to stand or not, but really newly formed, so I'm going to read our mission statement, which was just approved this morning. And the purpose of HPC is to protect and promote the health of Harwich ponds, as well as other freshwater and saltwater resources. And the intent is to do that through research and education and advocacy. So we look forward to working with all of you, members of the community, to do that for Harwich, because I think it's, we all think it's really important. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
Hi, good evening. Julie Wittes, COA Director. I'm here for a couple of reasons tonight. First, I just would like to start by announcing just a few programs, really just a few, that the COA is offering this September. And I also would like to thank my board members for coming out to support our work today. So what I wanted to announce most of all is a retirement series that we have coming up, starting next week. So we're hosting a three-part series on planning for retirement. The events are held on Thursdays from 6:00 to 7:00, and they'll be September 12th, 19th, and 26th. So these cover topics such as retirement planning strategies, including financial planning, planning for Medicare, and also understanding social security benefits. So we know that most of our COA members have already retired, but we want to remind everyone that we are here to serve everyone who's 60 and up in the community, and we hope you might come out for this if you have any questions about retirement. In addition, we thought it would be helpful to let the community know that we have a representative from the Housing Rehab Program coming out to talk about their resource. So that's going to be on Tuesday, September 17th, from 1:00 to 2:00. And just to explain what this program is, it provides zero interest loans up to $50,000 towards home repair projects, specifically to year-round Harwich residents. So they cover critical home repairs, like a new roof, new siding, new windows, doors, et cetera. Or they can also help with modifications to make a home more accessible for those with mobility limitations or other disabilities. So they will be out to answer questions and talk about how you can qualify for that program and apply if you're interested. And then finally, just another reminder that we have a new support group meeting at the COA. On the first and third Wednesdays of every month, we're hosting a support group that's run by the Alzheimer's Family Support Center. So the support group is open to anyone who is caring for a loved one with dementia, Alzheimer's disease, or some other cognitive impairment. And while the support group runs, we have a companion group set aside where their loved one can engage in some activities, which are led by compassionate and very highly-trained staff, so you're in safe hands. So for all of these programs, we are taking registration by phone or email, or you can walk in, as long as we have room to seat you, we will be happy to seat you. And finally, I am here to provide another update on the needs assessment that I first discussed with you this past February. So we are getting ready to start that. The project kicks off in about two weeks. And so just a reminder to the community, thanks to the generous sponsorship of the Friends of the Harwich Council on Aging, we are going to be able to carry out this needs assessment with the help of the UMass Boston Institute of Gerontology over the next year. The objective is really just to learn more about what the town, and especially its older adults, need, want, and believe to be important, so that we can perform a, excuse me, inform a strategic plan going forward. The entire process does take about a year, so in about a year from now, hopefully, I'll be standing in front of you again to offer findings and disseminate those to the community. And in the meantime, I'll just come back and update you on the status of the project. The most relevant thing for the Select Board to know tonight is that in one of the early phases of the project, they do request that we set up some key informant and stakeholder interviews, and they would like to include the Town Administrator and at least a couple of Select Board members, so we would be grateful for your participation in that.
Great.
And that is all I have for you. Anyone who wants to sign up for our newsletter or find out more information about this, you can go to our website at harwichcoa.com.
Thank you very much, Julie.
Hi. Harwich Children's Fund, Sheila House of Ellicottay. We wanted to ask permission if we could just do this as a public comment instead of an agenda item. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Take it away.
Well, Sheila and I, and Linda Rogers back there hiding, she won't come up here. We're here representing the Harwich Children's Fund, and mainly here to thank the Town of Harwich, and the Select Board, and Joe Powers, and we have so many people to thank for our very successful fundraising effort to support the mission of Harwich Children's Fund this summer, which was Circus Murcus. Anybody see it? Okay. I don't know if they really did or didn't. We hosted a circus for a week here in Harwich, the week of July 16th and 19th. If you drove down Oak Street and saw a big top tent, circus tent there. This is a very famous...
Polished.
Polished.
Internationally renowned.
It took us five years to get them here, let's put it that way. It's a very competitive, it's a touring circus in a European style that is just in the summer. They're headquartered in Vermont. They tour in New England, and they've been wanting to get to Cape Cod, too. It's a great location, and they couldn't have been happier. And so we feel fortunate in some of the accolades that came our way, because we were the presenters and the hosts, really our accolades that belong, shared with the community and the officials in the community, because we broke records here in Harwich. As a first-time presenter, we sold out three of our four shows, and the fourth one almost sold out, and they haven't had anyone do that for years. So because it takes a lot of effort to get people in the door for the very first time, once they know about it, once you're a repeat presenter, it's far easier to get them there. But they're all child performers in the ages of eight to 18. They stay in some of the homes in Harwich. Sheila was a home stay parent. So there's so many wonderful things that the circus did, but we couldn't have got them here. Angie Chalaco, who couldn't be here tonight, known to probably everybody in the room, for a little bit, Angie and I were, we met with Joe Powers, we met with the Select Board, we met with the Building Department, Board of Health, the Fire Department, the Police Department.
DPW.
DPW.
Recreation.
Community Center. Carolyn was amazingly supportive and helpful. Recreation Department, Recreation Commission. Did we leave anyone out, Joe?
No, I think you've covered everybody.
But in any of you, and all of you here, in some part, whether you know it or not, contributed to the success of this, and that contributes to the success of our mission, because all the monies and profits that we took in from this circus go completely back, we're a nonprofit group, they go completely back into the community to help the children and families in the community of Harwich. You should say something.
No, you're doing a great job.
That's the Tom Sawyer approach. So mostly, our group works through our retired teachers, retired school administrators, community members. That's how we formed originally. So we do work through the schools to really identify some of their needs, some of the families' needs, the children's needs. We have done so many things in the past, and with the success of Circus Murcus, children performers, it completely connects to our mission of helping children and families, and we provide an entertainment. It was amazing, I think, as Joe said, who's been incredibly, we should have brought your nose here tonight for you to wear. He was so incredibly supportive, we can't thank you enough, because as he said, coming down Oak Street and seeing the circus there and the Mariners across the street, and all the people who were there went down and bought ice cream, or maybe came to the restaurants here, and it just brought so much to the town for a week, besides, I guess, just to the Harwich Children's Fund. So thank all of you for hosting, or, you know, if you had any part in this, and you all definitely did. So thank you, and extend our thanks on to all the departments that...
And if anybody wants to host some kids next year, go on our website, www.harwichchildrensfund.com. And the kids are just amazing to have. They entertain my nieces and nephews, taught them some great tricks. So it's a wonderful event and a great organization. So thank you all, and...
You can't see them, but there's all the kids in this program that were there. The show is just amazing. We don't have any better adjectives, I don't think, but...
Well, I think we also owe you a great thanks for all you do for the kids in Harwich.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Patrick Otten, East Harwich. I just want to say thank you to the Select Board for being open and receptive of public comments and listening. So I appreciate the Select Board and your willingness to hear what people have to say. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick. Anybody else for public comment and announcement?
Hi, Teresa Johnson, North Harwich. I'm just wondering if there was any updates on the traffic study for Queen Anne Road, and if there were any updates on the proposed Pine Oaks Village 4 huge housing development.
So on the traffic study, the data is being compiled. That will be another agenda topic in the coming weeks. I don't know if we have a timeframe from Steve Rhodes yet.
No, but I can follow up with him. I believe there's a general topic next week for a Select Board discussion, so I'll certainly be reaching out to VHB on that.
And in terms of an update on the filing with the state, we checked...
Yeah, as of last week, staff made contact with the state. They have nothing on file. We haven't received anything yet.
Okay, but they did send a letter into the state?
I don't know that for sure.
Okay. I have a copy of it. I can email it to you.
I have a copy of a letter that, last week, staff was told by the state that they don't have a copy of the letter.
Right, so currently, we've been informed that it hasn't been filed yet.
Okay. All right, but the traffic study is underway?
Traffic study's underway, yep.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment and announcement? Because we have a massive agenda here, so I'm going to move on then. And can I get a motion on the consent agenda? Do you want to do them separately, Dawn, on the minutes?
Wrong side.
Okay.
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Item A, approve the Select Board meeting minutes from August 19, 24. Vote to accept a gift, sorry, Item B, vote to accept a gift from the Friends of the Harwich Council on Aging for a gift of a 14-passenger van. And Item C, vote to approve the committee appointment, I'm sorry, Vivian, but Mulhall Maguire, I hope is correct, as recommended by the Interview Committee to the Conservation Commission, term to expire June 30, 27.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, Dawn?
Yeah, I just, I might add that in your packet, you received the minutes from our Interview Committee meeting, and there was Harwich Accessibility Rights Committee that we're not making a recommendation for, not because of the candidate, but Michael and I spoke about it. He would like to wait until Megan comes back, because she's the accessibility officer. And if she finds that the revised charge is in accordance with, harmony with her duties, then we'll go ahead and do that. But there's no particular reason other than that, that we held it back.
Thank you.
It's my understanding there's a letter that the Board's going to sign regarding that? Is that your understanding?
I don't know. All I did is have a conversation with Michael, that he was waiting for Megan to come back to have...
There was a letter going around regarding a person that put in for the committee, but there was no appointment pending the charge update.
I wasn't aware of that, but I mean, that would be fine if we're sending that, because I wouldn't want the message to be that we're turning your... I wouldn't want the message to be that we're turning her down. That's not true.
Right, and we did talk about bringing that back when Megan was back, so. Okay, so, any other discussion? Jeff, do you have any comment? All right, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. And now, we're gonna go to our joint meeting with the Water and Wastewater Commissioners, and do you want to stay where you are, or have a few sit, or whatever you want to do? Or you can, well, there's not a lot. Yeah. Yeah, okay, do you want to do that?
So, I'll call.
Yeah, call your meeting to order.
The meeting of the Water and Wastewater Commissioners to order. We have Commissioners Alan Taunton, Slav Young, John Goff, and myself, Noreen Doydoo. And tonight, we also bring our former Wastewater, Water and Wastewater Superintendent Dan Pelletier. And I'll take this opportunity to introduce to the town our new Water and Wastewater Superintendent, Jason Trepin.
Welcome, and welcome back. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could, we're also represented this evening by several representatives from GHD Incorporated. First and foremost is Mark Drainville. Mark, this is absolutely your opportunity to come forward and drag anyone, I mean, bring anyone with you. We have an open microphone at this table, we have an open microphone there and there, but I think as the board knows, and one member had asked if that was actually your correct surname, the guy that works on wastewater is named Drainville, here's living proof.
I need to see his ID.
Thank you. But Madam Chairs, GHD is here to go through all of the topics on your joint agenda this evening, and it's great to be joined by our former colleague and our new colleague as well. If it pleases everybody, I'd turn it over to Mark Drainville on behalf of GHD.
Perfect, and I just had one question for the Chair, is, did you have any reorganization of how you wanted the agenda items? No? Okay.
No, it was sent to me in advance, and I think it's fabulous.
Perfect, great, thanks. Okay, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Mark Drainville with GHD. We have a couple of people here with us today that'll join us as we get to different parts of the agenda. Anastasia Radenko is gonna help us on the first couple of topics first, so we can get started.
So, I'm Anastasia Radenko, and I'll provide an update on the first three. I'm sorry, my name's not as thematic as Mark's. But on the first item, the watershed permit, a little over a year ago, in July 2023, Massachusetts promulgated new watershed permitting regulations. So, these are regulations that outline the procedures and the process to get watershed permits. Watershed permits are permits in a 20-year cycle that allow the town to implement multiple strategies to meet its TMDL goals. We're concurrently working on a CWMP update project, and so what we've done is adjust that project to meet the requirements of the watershed management plan, which will be required as part of the application process for those permits. The town successfully completed the first part of the permit, which is to issue, or sorry, of the cycle, which is to issue a notice of intent, so notifying Mass DEP that the town will be applying for permits for the four remaining watersheds that don't have permits so far. The fifth is Pleasant Bay, which is the first watershed permit that's been issued in Massachusetts. On Pleasant Bay, so that's a permit that's been in existence, it's coming up on its fifth year, and every five years, as part of the permit cycle, the Pleasant Bay Alliance looks at the assumptions that were put into that permit and makes recommendations on updates to the permit. So, the Pleasant Bay Alliance is currently working on the updates. They're looking at updating the water use numbers that were used in the original permit and incorporating growth projections. So, the growth projections for Harwich are consistent in the ones that have been used in the Phase Two and Phase Three projects that we worked through with Dan Pelletier, looking at the development of vacant lots and looking at trends in water usage so that the permit will meet the goals not only today, but throughout the 20-year cycle. And then, there's also discussions on some of the models that have been used and some of the inputs, updating those based on more updated model runs, and I'd be happy to go into that in more detail if there were any questions. The goal is to submit those modification requests at the end of the year, so we can continue to provide updates on the modifications that are being proposed as part of that permit if the board would like.
I think that would be helpful. Do any board members have specific questions before Anastasia begins? Do you want to go ahead?
Sure. So, the two main changes that are being looked at right now, there's been a new model that's been run that incorporates the widening of Muddy Creek, which increases the total flushing. So, we're looking at whether those attenuation percentages are appropriate to use in the new permit requirements. And there's also been a refinement of the model where one section that was treated as one sub watershed has been broken into multiple subwatersheds, which allows different attenuation percentages to be used. So, calculations are being done to see how those would affect Harwich's permit removal requirements. Those calculations currently show that Harwich would meet its permit removal requirements within the next 20 years with both Phases Two and Phases Three of searing.
So, there's no, so currently, those figures will stand, you'll see how they change by the end of the year and then submit.
Yes, yeah, and the permit has, every five years, it'll be revisited. So, for instance, the growth assumptions that are made now, growth will be tracked, and those can be adjusted in five-year intervals based on actual data and new model or new scientific data that's gathered by the Pleasant Bay Alliance. So, it's meant to be an adaptive management approach that's constantly bringing in new information in the program implementation.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, if I could, I believe for the record, does this correspond to the Mike Giggi memorandum?
Yes, yes.
So, you can see that, right, Pierce, and their engineer, Mike Giggi? That's the data points, I think, that Anastasia's been referring to. So, that outlines the overall discussion on that particular watershed permit, and then you can see the particular information for Harwich.
Right.
Thank you.
I could mention one other thing. So, you've probably heard the watershed permit for Pleasant Bay before. I mean, that's been going on for some period of time. It's kind of been the model in the state. That's gonna carry forward now to all other watersheds. So, that's the thing that Anastasia mentioned, that the regulations that were promulgated by the state last year, that sets in motion watershed permitting for all the watersheds. So, I just want to make that connection.
That's impressive. Can I ask one question while we're talking about the specific data that, from Pleasant Bay Alliance? When I'm looking at, I think this is page three, and it talks about a 354% number on Muddy Creek Upper, followed by 26% on Muddy Creek Lower. I'm just, can you just break down that info, just so I understand it better?
So, are those attenuation percentages?
Yeah, it says the increase, the overall increase of the nitrogen load removal requirements, and it has the breakdown of Brewster, Chatham, Harwich, and Orleans.
Could be early on.
Yeah, it's in the beginning.
Do you mind if I?
You have that?
I don't have that, I have a newer.
Madam Chair, you're talking about that?
Yeah, I think it's page three.
Three is what I, what it's on.
And if you don't have the data, right, I'm just, I just, those numbers jumped out at me.
So, that's looking at the changes in attenuation and the growth projections. So, the original permit requirements were just for currents, and there's an understanding in the permit that the town needs to manage future growth, too. This is starting to incorporate what is that 20-year growth projection?
Okay, so it's just looking to update?
Yes, yeah, so those are both updates.
Dan?
Yeah, if I can just, if I'm following the 354% number, and not to bring up a sore subject, but that, I believe, is attributed to what we have discussed as oversearing in East Harwich.
Oh, okay, that makes sense.
So, the original targeted watershed management plan had the lower number, and what we actually removed was that larger figure.
Okay, great, that actually helps me, thank you. Any, do you, next, do you want to go to the next topic?
So, before you talk about the CW, you want to go about that a little bit?
So, sure.
Just before you go to that, let me just make one other point about watershed permitting. So, one of the changes that the state has made by implementing the watershed permitting process is, as you are seeing a schedule in Pleasant Bay, you're gonna start to see schedules now in other watersheds. So, in, you know, prior to last year, you know, most communities were kind of proceeding as fast as they wanted to, and now, as you enter into watershed permitting processes with the state, now you'll have schedules as you do for Pleasant Bay, you'll have those for other watersheds, too. There'll be, you know, something that'll be applied for and worked through with the state, but you will, you will have schedules for all the other watersheds, too.
And they'll be every five years evaluated?
Yes. So, it's a 20-year permit cycle. The minimum requirement is to meet 75% of your TMDL goal within that first 20-year permit cycle, and then the remainder in the next 20-year. If that's infeasible for a community, a community can make a case for an alternate schedule, but that's what we're using as the basis. So, what we're doing now is looking at the searing that's required for a 20-year planning horizon in the remaining watersheds, and then working through that phasing within those two permit cycles. And then concurrently, we're also looking at treated effluent recharge options. The state has also changed the way that they're permitting treated effluent to groundwater, so as we learn more about what the new policies are of how those permits will be evaluated, we're incorporating that into the evaluations to see if some of the sites that were originally identified are viable sites or not, and what their estimated capacities are.
Okay.
And all of that will be incorporated into the CWMP update, which is also being structured, again, to be part of that watershed management plan for the permit application.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, I just wanted to make sure Anastasia touched on the CWMP.
And does that, in terms of, just to follow up on that, is there any clarification we're gonna get anytime soon from DEP in terms of whether or not, I mean, I know we're in good shape, but the IA systems and whether or not they're gonna be requiring those in different towns that don't move forward? I remember that was a, I know it continues to circulate.
So, every town that's subject to the new regulations, except for one, has applied for the notice of intent, which allows you to develop the watershed management plan and to outline the strategies that are used. So, if there's an INA program, it's part of the plan. So, there's only one that has that, that is subject to that default INAs in all of the watershed, installed over five years, and then if you don't meet your TMDL goals, you still need to go through the watershed management planning process. So, this process provides more flexibility with the timing.
Thank you.
And the technologies used.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Also to that point about INAs, we don't currently have a developed policy to oversee the maintenance of them, which would absolutely be a requirement if we go down that road. There would have to be some compliance mechanism and some inspection that we could assure that the homeowners are performing.
One of the alternatives we're looking at in the update is different alternatives for an IA program in conjunction with the searing, which would allow us to lessen the searing. If that's an option that's brought forward, the town would need to establish a responsible management entity. Because you're absolutely correct, that would need to be monitored, it would need to be tracked in order to get the nitrogen credits from that program as part of the permit. So, it's not just the installation of the systems, it's making sure they're functioning correctly and actually getting those nitrogen removal requirements.
And I say that for those people who think that's an appealing option so that we don't have to invest in mega capital improvements for pipes and other stuff. The alternative requires an expenditure also that would be an ongoing operational expense.
I think of it as a utility similar to a collection system, right? You're just managing a different type of infrastructure.
Right. Thank you, Don. Pete, do you have anything?
Nothing I should say.
Jeff, you're good? Okay, we can move on.
All right, so those are the first three topics, they're all interrelated, so we kind of went through those together, so, yeah, so any other, any questions on, those are all kind of planning-related, permitting-related items, so.
Well, I do, if I may, Madam Chair, thank you. Do you see any new, new regulations coming down the road that we're gonna have to pivot and cost us more money? I'll also get right to it.
So, the ones that came out last year, the watershed permitting ones, I mean, those are, those are new, you know, those are brand-new regulations. They're, they're going to take several years for the permitting process to work its way through, but I would say, I'm not sure that there's anything new, but that's new enough that it's, it hasn't, hasn't rolled out yet, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does, thank you. So, Madam Chair, if I could, Mark, you've made reference, I think, to item A, watershed permitting, B, the status of the refacing for the current Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, lovingly referred to as our CWMP, and there's also the item of the Pleasant Bay Alliance permit modification. Can you speak to those other items briefly, B and C? The refacing, because if I remember correctly, refacing, as the board and the commission may recall, I believe it was the 2022 special town meeting where we all took the initiative ahead of the regulatory changes to revisit the CWMP. So, that project's been underway. Do you have a sense of where you're at and what next steps could be?
Yeah, so, you know, the fall is when we're gonna be speaking to town staff about some proposed, let's call it refacing, you know, based on the new regs. I guess that's the, that's the main thing, is that ultimately, that updated plan will have a restructured plan that accommodates the regulations that just came out last year, so.
And so, when you submit that restructuring plan, is there any official approval that we have to wait on?
We'll ultimately, so this is gonna be a formal, it has to go through MEPA, right? Yeah, so, we'll have to go through MEPA, which your primary CWMP had to go through, so this will be the same.
Okay.
Yeah, and this is, you know, the process, this update is a common process that you will likely to go through every five years to check on progress, and so.
Okay, so then you'll just wait for MEPA's comments?
Yep. I mean, we want to make, you know, before it goes to MEPA, the town would, you know, you would all hear about it, and then we'd ultimately have to get approval through MEPA for it.
Can I, Madam Chair? Do we just sit back and wait for MEPA to tell us, or do we actually engage in the conversation and give pushback if required?
So, MEPA is a, like, kind of a, an opportunity to share documents with all organizations within the state, and that's a way for us to get comments from DEP, you know, Mass DOT, can you help me, who else?
Mass Historical. So, multiple regulatory agencies, it also goes to neighboring communities and anybody that wants to be on the distribution list. It's actually a good mechanism because it has a defined public review process, so it's much quicker than going to a regulatory agency directly. What happens is all those agencies submit comments. MEPA is basically a clearinghouse, so it reviews those comments and decides which ones are in the scope to finalize your project.
Understood, and I appreciate that clarification, but I guess my overall point is, whatever the response is, we just take it face value and move on?
No, we can respond and push back.
Do we?
We can.
Yeah, no, but do we? Historically, have we? Or no?
I could not answer your question for the first project because we didn't do that.
Sure.
Okay, but I can tell you that you can absolutely push back or negotiate.
Okay.
Yeah, that opportunity is there.
Appreciate that, Ethel.
Noreen?
Does a revision have to go through town meeting?
Technically, would the CWMP revision go through town meeting? I don't recall.
Because we accepted it through.
Right, originally, right.
It's probably, I mean, I have not experienced that, that's not to say, you know.
I think we just voted.
We voted.
Specifically voted by a Select Board or other entity.
I think what we need is permission to submit it to MEPA, then it becomes a public document that anybody can comment on. There would be a hearing, which is back up, you know, after it's presented in a, you know, in a forum like this, we would have a specific hearing on it so that the public, so the town, you know, residents would get an opportunity to comment on it, and then ultimately, it would go through, you know, the state review through MEPA.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, is that adequate for you, Joe, in terms of?
Certainly is, and, and for the commission as well.
Right.
If they had any questions on the rephasing. And then could you speak about the permit modification for the Pleasant Bay Alliance?
Yeah, do you want to just go over that one more time?
Sure, sure. So as we're approaching the end of the five-year cycle of the permit, that's when we're going to, the Pleasant Bay Alliance is going to be submitted proposed modifications. The modifications that are currently being discussed are including 20-year growth projections, so through the 20-year cycle of the permit, and then potentially changing the assumptions in the model, so updating the attenuation with the updated model, and then looking at what's called disaggregation. So it's breaking a watershed that was originally modeled as one watershed into multiple watersheds to look at them in more detail. As those are being, as those evaluations are being done, there's usually a series of, of memos that are proposed, that are proposed by Mike Giggy. Those are reviewed at Pleasant Bay Alliance meetings. We can bring those forward to this group as well to provide an update. And then at the end of the year, the idea is to submit those permit modification requests.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did have something, a couple of other things. First off, in answer to my colleague's question here, you were brought in as a discussor to another engineering firm that we didn't really feel comfortable with at the time to actually look at phasing in, in a totally fresh pair of eyes. Could you get that for me? I'm a little busy.
Turn on speaker.
The second thing is, I just have a question because they're interrelated problems. What's the state's current timeline, their analysis on discharge permits relative to microplastics and other emerging threats? Because the two go hand in hand. When you're developing a system, you got to figure out where to put the treated water, and they, that's integral to what our current dilemma is. We may be actually doing inadvertently bad things when we're taking treated water and discharging it, so do you have any sense of where they are with any of this?
Very, very early in the process. So there's, I know there's an advisory panel that's been put together that's looking at microplastic PTHs and shorter-term CECs, but at this point, they don't have regulatory guidance in place, or as far as I know, a timeline to implement it.
So CECs is contaminants of emerging concern, which is
Pharmaceuticals.
tens, millions of, of, you know, muscule amounts of chemicals that could be present.
I get all that, that's why I brought it up, because this is something, regardless of what we decide, that is going to have to guide where things go eventually, because that's all part of this.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's an important comment, because, I mean, ultimately, things will change, so.
That absolutely needs to be part of the discussion as this plan evolves.
Right. And that's why I think it makes sense, as we're going by areas, to, to pick them up, because we don't know what we're going to be facing in another five years, you know, or 10 years, or whatever. But we know permitting-wise, we're going every five years to have them reviewed. We also know that water quality is another major concern, so.
And, and that is part of the Pleasant Bay Alliance work, is collecting that water quality monitoring and reviewing those assumptions of how fast this groundwater travel, how fast are the plumes washing out.
Right.
And then those five-year periods are opportunities to adjust the plan based on those findings.
Do you have a follow-up?
No, I think, and questions to your colleagues as well, if there's anything on these three topics, because I think you've heard Mark refer to them as, these are the planning sort of items that are on the docket for tonight, before we get into construction projects and policy items.
Do you have anything, Norine? Anybody on your board? Everybody good? Okay, great. Oh, yeah, sure.
I think I've been seven on this whole thing for about 20 years.
I know. Alan, and you've been here for so long, but will you just state your name?
Yeah. What bothers me now, as, as a water commissioner, sewer commissioner, we don't hear much back. We don't, we're not interacting like with you guys, or you have an interim meeting. You know, this was good tonight, I learned a lot tonight. But there has to be some ongoing with this.
Well, right, I agree, and that's why we're having this meeting in particular, to start a better communication.
Well, you know, I'm in the dark. It's a joke. Anyway, I made my point, I think, and I'd like to see something come of it. You know, we're going to do this, and we're doing it together.
Right.
You know, we, we need to be a part of it.
Agreed, right.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate it, and we'll talk.
Thank you.
So if we're all set with the first three items?
Yep.
All right, then Bob?
Thanks, Anastasia.
Thank you.
So if I could do a sort of introduction, items D and E obviously have some connection to one another. They both regard Route 28, as you know, the Mass Department of Transportation is looking to undergo road repairs on that roadway that it impacts upon West Harwich. So they were two different projects under the leadership of our former superintendent. We have the funding, we've been prepared for this, and now we're reaching the point where roadways will be pierced, and hopefully pipes will be laid. And having said that, Bob has reached the point where I can now defer to Mark and talk about the next two topics.
So, yeah, so that's a great introduction. This is Bob Drake, and Bob is leading both of these projects. He'll give a summary of both of them, where they stand.
Great, thanks, Mark. As Mark said, my name is Bob Drake with GHD. The first project, what we consider the first project, starts with our, or commences up by Upper County Road and Division Street, runs easterly down Route 28 to the Herring River. As Joe mentioned, this is part of a larger project by Mastart, which involves, you know, reconstruction of the roadway, sidewalks, drainage, and so forth. GHD's part in all this is we're going to be replacing the existing water main, which is aging, and installing a no, a new low-pressure sewer main in the roadway. And the reason why we're installing the new pressure sewer in the roadway is for future contracts, so we don't have to go back and redig the roadway. It consists of approximately 4,000 feet of 3-inch sewer, force main, and approximately 3,800 linear feet of 12-inch duct lined water main. Where we stand right now, we have submitted 75% drawings and plans to Mastart and also to the town. In the past, I worked with Dan, reviewing the town's comments and concerns about the water and sewer infrastructure, and I've already reached out to Jason to set up a meeting with him to pick his brain a little bit moving forward. Anticipated schedule is, we're waiting for Mastart's review of our plans, that were submitted back in December. Anticipated schedule is for construction to begin after Labor Day of 2025. That's the latest construction schedule I have. As far as Contract 2, Contract 2 basically picks up where Contract 1 ends, right at the Herring River, runs easterly to South Street. It involves approximately 9,000 linear feet of 12-inch ductile iron water main, and it also involves installing a secondary or a redundant water main underneath the Herring River. It's going to be installed by directional drilling. It's about 500 feet. In case something ever happens to the water main on the bridge, the town has an extra water line to, to keep the water flowing. No redancing. The anticipated schedule right now for the second phase is right now where we submitted 90% plans to the town for review and also to Mastart. We're waiting for Mastart's review comments, or working with Mastart to answer any of their questions that they may have. Anticipated bid date is in December of this year, and that's all pending on Mastart's review. You know, sometimes they do get lengthy. So that's where we stand on both of those projects.
Do you have any idea in terms of when they're, I know it's from, but in terms of them getting back to you with any feedback, are you talking a couple months?
I'm hoping the next set of, we've already submitted one set of drawings to them, and we, we're in the process of revising the plans according to their requirements.
Okay.
One of their requirements is doing additional soil borings out in Route 28, which we're in the process of doing, which we just have recently hired a contractor to do that, which should be completed, I'm hoping, by the end of September. Once that's completed, then we can, you know, submit again, another set of review drawings to them. They do require three sets of reviews, so hopefully they're efficient and quick with their reviews and, you know, the, I can tell you many stories where even just putting in for a soil boring sometimes takes up to six months for the review, but, you know, so far, they've been pretty good.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why we're hoping
That's good news.
by the end of the year, we're able to have some documents and plans ready.
Did they just look for the additional soil borings, just to, to have extended info? Or is there any, any result in a soil boring that they would question?
I think they primarily wanted it for thickness of the road.
Thickness of the roadways and so forth, right? Location of the water table, existing water table.
I see. Norine?
Thank you. So in relation to the water portion of it, the water main, I'm a little hard of hearing. Did I hear that the construction for that could possibly start in the spring?
No.
For Phase 2?
Oh, for Phase 2, we're, we're hoping to advertise for bid in December of this year. And if that happens, there's a possibility of that. Then it all depends on how quickly, you know, the contract gets approved by the town, the contractor has, you know, signed documents.
Yep.
Construction, usually that process takes about three, three months. Springtime is a possibility, the likelihood of it, you know, I would say probably after Labor Day.
So that would be Labor Day 2025?
That's correct.
Okay. So just in case, it could be spring, and you'll be representing the Water Department. So I have to ask, has there been any outreach? Is outreach scheduled for the residents and businesses along Route 28 for whatever preparations they may have to make to keep their businesses going?
Well, that's part of the discussion I'll have with Jason moving forward. As of right now, no, but it'll probably be planned for the future.
Okay. All right. And we would, we would definitely want to have a finger on that pulse, and I'm sure the same thing for the other section of Route 28.
Right, I have, in the past, have sat down with Dan, and we've done a special on Contract 2, extremely thorough investigation where all the water services for all the, not only homes, but also the businesses, to make sure we know exactly how they're fed, so.
Okay. Thank you. Don?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Under the banner of public education, because not everybody follows this closely every day, as long as he's here, I'm going to take the opportunity to once again thank Dan Pelletier for bringing up the subject of the dry pipe, to combine it with the state's reconstruction of Route 28. It saved us a massive amount of money. We didn't have to tear up the road to put anything in. It's all integral to the project, so thanks, Dan. Second of all, I'm sure most people don't understand this, it isn't just a question of the money, it's a question of policy, that Mastart does not allow you to tear up a road that they just paved. So there's some functional problems here, too. We, we acted in a way that actually is going to save money down the road, also forgive the pun, because you wouldn't have been allowed to actually put the pipe in for, what is it, five years?
Five years.
Five years.
Yeah, so, again, this is good planning, and I appreciate everybody's efforts in that.
Thank you, Don. Yeah, and I mean, obviously, we were related to here that we could combine efforts, because obviously, as Don has pointed out, it saved us a lot of money, and thank you, Dan, for paying attention to all of that. Any other questions on any of these items? Do you want to go on? Norine, does anyone else on your board have any? Nothing? Okay. So we can go on to?
All right, so the next topic.
Mark, does that relieve Bob of the hot seat? The next up would be Jeff Gregg.
Yes.
So, Madam Chairs, what we're talking about now would first be, obviously, our next sewer construction project, as we all know, Phase 3 East Harwich Extension, as you've heard discussions already, Contract 1 East and 2W. So our project director is Jeff Gregg, and then after that, we'll talk about what I've been referring to lovingly as Phase 3A Great Sand Lake. So first, the, I believe, the largest construction project in the history of the town of Harwich to date, adjusting for inflation, it would be the water projects that the folks on my left did years ago, but it's a big kahuna. And as the two chairs talked about, these joint meetings between the public bodies, we, staff and engineers, wanted to make sure we had this discussion and build other discussions for community engagement. So Dan and I, in the past, have met with Jeff Gregg, and we did a Phase 3 pre-meeting last March. I did a pre-meeting, as was stated earlier, with Great Sand Lakes. So now I think we'd be looking to hosting community engagement sessions, perhaps at the community center, to get more folks in to ask a lot more questions, because as you'll hear in a moment, construction for Phase 3 is imminent. So, did I stall enough?
You did. All right.
Thank you very much. Jeff Gregg from GHD. So the Phase 3 project, as Joe alluded to, we got the bids, we have the contractor signed up, we have Robert B. Our company doing both the contracts, so there's an advantage to having them work actually on both of them. We are in the process of, we have had our pre-construction meeting, we've had some pre-meetings with town staff as well to get us ramped up, and we have just received the contractor's tentative schedule that we are in the process of reviewing. So I don't want to get into any of the details at this point until we're able to go through that, provide comments, talk with the, the town, and then follow up with the contractor. So the, what I can say in terms of their schedule is they had requested that they were looking at starting around November 1st. So in terms of actually, you know, starting the process of, you know, shovels in the ground and seeing the contractor out, they were going to do that. We may be talking with them about the possibility of getting some of the notifications out to the various different neighborhoods, depending on where they're starting, so that typically they will go out beforehand, they will mark where lateral services are on the streets that are in certain areas. Because it's a large area, they won't do them all at the same time, they will do them in segments, and depending on how they fall into the schedule and which year they fall into, they, they will get those notices out, and then they will follow up with their actual construction. We are fielding comments. To date, we've gotten a large number of, you know, interested residents that have contacted us, so we are following up with them to talk with them about any of their particular questions about their lateral location and where they'd like to have it, and then we will, you know, issue any clarifications or modifications to the contractor with that. We are getting, what we call shop drawings in right now, which are basically their requests for materials and equipment that they want to install as part of the project per the specification. So we're, we're going through that process right now. I'm, and I apologize, I just came back from vacation, so I'm, I forgot to look to see when our next progress meeting is. I don't know, Joe, if you?
Good news, it's next week.
Okay. So we have a, we have another progress meeting next week, so, so we'll have a better, better handle on, you know, our next steps with regards to leading up to November 1st. And as Joe said, he and I have already had discussions, and at this point, we just, you know, we need to settle on some dates for additional public outreach. So we'll, we'll do another session like we did in March and go through So we'll, we'll do another session like we did in March and go through probably a lot of the same things that we talked about at that, at that meeting with regards to, a lot of the questions have to do with, when are they coming by my house? What happens when they come by my house? What happens if I want them to move, you know, my service? Or I have a question about my service? Or, there are properties that we had to identify that they may have to, even if the gravity sewer goes by their home, they may still have to pump just based on their, their physical location relative to the road and relative to the sewer. There are some that are questionable. People may make decisions on, hey, if I relocate where, where the, you know, the pipe comes out of my house from my septic system now to the sewer, if I reroute that, maybe I can, you know, get that by gravity. And there are some places where just the Board of Health records are just limited, so we didn't have enough information to really make, you know, much more than a, an informed decision on where we thought the lateral would go. So, we'll be working through all of those things. I don't know if there are other items with regards to Phase Three. As a reminder, there are two contracts. One E, which is just means that it's the east side and that's essentially has most of the pumping stations in it, deals with, uh, Route 39 and Orleans Road and pretty much anything that was in the sewer area that's east of that road. And then it extends along Pleasant Bay to about Hall's Path, I think. And then it also deals with the neighborhood that's up by Wilmes, Wilmes Way. And then, Two W, the W is just the west, and that is from basically Hall's Path on Pleasant Bay to Elm and upper Standish Woods. And I apologize, I can't remember the other sort of development that's south of there that has, um, was it Harding? No, I'm trying to think of what the name of that.
Walden.
Yeah, before Walden. I didn't want to say Walden because I know Walden was coming out, you know, so, but yes, up to Walden, sort of that, that, that general area. And there's one pumping station associated with, with that. They have two different timeframes. The smaller one, which is the Western Project Two W, is roughly two, just under two and a half years. And, um, the larger one is approaching three years. I think it's, maybe it's 2.9 or 2.10 years or something like that.
For completion?
Took, yeah, till, till, so that would be till final completion. And then there's just some sort of post-work that we do as we finalize record drawings and things of that nature. So, it's a, it's a pretty long duration. There is, the town will be doing, um, as part of the project, as, not as part of this project, but during the same project, there are some stormwater improvements that are being proposed, that will happen concurrently. And also, the town is replacing old water services in certain areas, so there are some of that work that is also going to sort of happen at the same time. The thing, I guess the most important thing for residents to understand is that construction may be multiple times on your road. So, I think a lot of people obviously experience this part of Phase Two. It'll be very similar, but they may come in phases in, as part of the project, so, because there's a lot of different things that go on for that. And Joe, I don't know if there were other things that...
No, I think you've covered most of it. So generally speaking, based on our progress meetings, my timeframe would be, we'll meet regularly as we have scheduled next week with the team. One of the major items will be that community engagement session, so that I might be able to come back to the Board at your meeting on September 16th to be able to announce a date, time, and location. I also want to use this opportunity to continue to push the interactive website, excuse me, interactive map on the website that Dan created, um, back in February, I think, we launched in March. So on our website, because it's new, it keeps getting pushed down, but right now, if anyone goes to the town's website under News, it's the sixth story, it used to be the first. So we're working to have that put permanently on the front page of the website, because if anybody has any questions about Phase Three, that's a great place to start. The interactive nature of it is, you can plug in your address and it tells you where you're at and, and the general information that Jeff just talked about. As we talk about that community engagement session and knowing that there may be construction beginning in November, we've already talked here and at joint meetings, I think. I will be announcing at select board meetings, as we did with Phase Two, a look ahead based on the, the construction schedule. So there's going to be ver, several different communication channels we use to put that information out. So, hopefully on September 16th, I can announce a date, time, and location for community engagement for Phase Three. The other thing I will put out there is the board members for next week will be signing interim loan notes. Dan was able to sort of set me up with the, the loan questionnaire, it's been completed, and we got confirmation that the interim loan notes will be in place for you to sign next week. I've mentioned it before, but I think it's worth bearing, the efforts of Dan, myself, and others have led to the town receiving zero percent interest on the loans, which is phenomenal. I think we were always looking at, absolutely, I think we were always looking at two and hoping, but zero has been confirmed, which is phenomenal.
Yeah.
So there's going to be a lot going on this month regarding Phase Three, for sure.
So you think on 9/16, if you can announce in a community engagement session, would it be in the next month or two?
Yeah, so we, we definitely want to do the Phase Three within the next month. We'll talk in a minute about Great Sand Lakes and the timing of that, but I think both of those will be this fall, for sure.
Okay. Thank you. Noreen?
Just one more detail while we're talking about signing things. There was a contract through you, Madam Chair, to the town administrator. There was the contract that we talked about briefly about EDR for the SCADA services for Phase Three. My interest is that water wastewater will inherit that system eventually, and I didn't see it go through your packets.
So I think, Mark, you might be able to talk about the SCADA contract that we've been discussing?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's, so, that is a topic that we'll have to, we'll have to address. It's understood that we will have to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, we haven't forgotten it, but we haven't executed that particular...
Just keep reminding you.
Sure, absolutely, it's on our radar. Yep, exactly, it's being reviewed by GHD.
Thank you.
And Joe, I don't know, I believe also on the website, people are looking in the Phase Three area for their septic plans, I believe, like they did for Phase Two. I think we sent all of the same documents over for Phase Three, so people can actually also, I mean, they can always go to the Board of Health and request it, but it is also available.
Yeah, the, the link that we're using for the interactive map actually brings you to the page, that's all the wastewater information. So there's Phase Two and now the updated documents for Phase Three. So that link will take you to all of that.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm all in on the bigger discussions about saving money, getting the loans for less, the dry pipe and all, and the grinder pumps we're going to be talking about. And I don't mean to trivialize the particular question I got, but we have all the engineers here. And, um, once these things are built, they're memorialized. I mean, that's where they are, that's, I've noticed, driving around this summer, with the benefit of having Phase One done, that there was some odd vehicular behavior. And it really centers around where the manholes are. And people are going over, off the shoulder, they're going off, over the line because they don't want to hit the manholes. Is there any way that they could conceive of the engineering of this, so that they're more dead center in the lanes and people aren't doing ridiculous things, they're putting themselves at risk?
So we, so we try, so we try during design, to the extent practical, to put them outside of the, basically, the wheel path. Unfortunately, you have a lot of utilities that like to go on the road. And depending on the width of the road and, and the design of the road, if it's curvy, if it's got lots of bends in it, things like that, every time that the pipe has to change direction, we have to have a manhole structure. So if you have a very sharp corner, in order for us to get around the sharp corner, we have to strategically place the manholes. We either have to put a whole bunch of manholes, or we put them in a place where it might end up in the wheel path.
Yeah, I don't want to burn a lot of time on this, I just, and you didn't design what I'm talking about. They are in straightaways on 39 particularly, it just seems absurd.
So we try to, but in, in other cases on 39, you have, you have some, you know, major gas services, water, stormwater, you have other facilities in there that also impact where we can actually place the sewer. And so, I can't guarantee that, you know, we tried to do that as, as we could, but, um, I cannot guarantee that there, you're not going to have some of the same kinds of issues during construction, just because we're the last utility, we're basically the last utility in, so.
Just bringing it up for, for purposes of 28 particularly, because that's a major state road.
So we, we're trying to stay away from that very large gas main, and so...
Details.
It kind of, it kind of limits us on where we, where we can put, where we could put things. But yes, we, we try to take that into consideration, but it's not always possible, and I'm sure, you know, CDM had the same issue when they were doing their design. Did you have other questions about Phase Three? Did you want me to shift to Great Sand Lakes?
Do you have anything to keep?
Nope.
Jeff?
Nope.
I guess, so...
All right. So Great Sand Lakes, we just entered into the design. The, I can, I'll talk sort of big picture schedule in terms of, um, the overall project. So in July, we filed a project evaluation form, which was the, basically, the notification to DEP SRF program that, hey, we want to see funding. So we put that in at the end of July. We will not actually hear from DEP on that until the start of the, the new year. So typically, somewhere in January, they will issue what's called an intended use plan, they'll issue a draft, and then ultimately a final, and that will identify where the project ranks on potential SRF funding. So, um, that's kind of like the first sort of big hurdle is, are you, did you get listed? You know, will you get listed? How high will you be on the, uh, the program? And then that lines you up for either, you know, two percent, or ultimately, we'd be still trying to go for zero percent. And then what would happen is, is, um, the project would then apply for SRF in, um, October of 2025 and would go to, have to be in construction by June of 2026. That's sort of the general SRF program that we're in. Because of the funding and the type, timeframe of what we're trying to do, we're working under, you know, the contract that we have to, to get us as far on design as we can. But then there will be additional work that'll need to happen in the spring of next year leading into, um, the SRF application. So the first, so the contract was kind of built as, hey, well, well, based on the timing, we get you so far, and then the town's going to need additional funds to get you through the SRF application and other permitting aspects and things like that. So, uh, that's where we stand right now. We've, we've, uh, signed up, or we're in the process of signing up our surveyor, uh, but they are going to be able to be complete just based on timing until probably the end of December. They will, we're also working on lining up the Public Archaeological Laboratory, they usually do a pre-review, and then they identify any other issues that we may need for permitting. So we're getting them signed up, and then we are trying to determine if we are going to do all the soil borings initially, or if we want to split them and do some now in, in the balance, uh, in the spring. Because the areas, because one, it's timing, and, um, we're trying to get as much information as we can from Queen Anne and the potential pumping station site. So, uh, we haven't, uh, we've had an initial meeting with Joe. We have not, I don't believe we've done our second meeting where we were going to have more of the staff to talk about just other, um, like with DBW and the Water Department and things like that, to kind of coordinate some of the other design aspects of it. And then we need to make sure that we can confirm that the, the site that was identified as part of planning is a viable location for the pumping station and, you know, make sure there's not other hurdles. And then we have to start all the, you know, as part of this first part of the project, we'll start all the sort of the permitting aspects, but we, we figure that planning and zoning and, and some of those approvals may fall into, um, next spring. So that's the, sort of the, the big picture schedule. We have, we have gotten, I believe, all of the septic records or the majority of them. We've been working with the Board of Health, so they've sent over that, so we've been going through that. Because we don't have, we won't have the final survey until late in the year, we're, we're basically working off of available data that we have. We know that there's, you know, risk and limitations in that, but we understand also the timeframe and trying to get as much of the project laid out and make sure that there aren't any other unforeseen conditions. We do, uh, Queen Anne Road, as people know, especially the people that live there, there's a nice new gas main, plus some other gas mains, and then there was stormwater that was also done. So the stormwater's on the north side, gas mains are on the south side, the water main's on the north side, and the sewer's going to go wherever it fits in between, and it may not be, um, we may not be able to dodge, you know, uh...
It's manholes.
The wheel lanes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Getting away from the absurd for a second here. Joe knows this, but the, when we established the Cape Roomstax for the so-called Clean Waters Board, the allocations are predicated, and I hate all of these alphabet soup names, but they're predicated on a completed intended use plan and, and a request for state revolving fund monies before June 30th. Or you lose the year and you have to wait another year for the county to actually weigh in on giving an allocation to you. Is, is that something that seems conceivably possible for this coming year, or are we going to lose the year?
So you would, so the, if I understand what you're asking...
Because we piggyback on the state's requirements rather than create a whole new set of requirements for the county.
You're, and you're talking about appropriating your funds for construction.
From the Clean Waters Fund.
Yeah, so what, what, so right now, at the end of, you know, this project and which, I think, um, so at the end of this, at the end of this phase of the project, we would have a cost estimate so that you would be able to have that for, when you're seeking your funds, for the May Town Meeting for appropriation, which is, which will, is the year before you would go to construction. So it, the timing would be July of '24, we filed, January of '25, you'd find out if you were on the list. May of '25, you would seek your appropriations. October of '25, you would file your actual application for SRF. And then between October of '25 through, till we get approval to bid, so usually through the end of the year and till probably early spring, you're addressing all the other comments that come back from DEP and other agencies finalizing your documents, and then you're going out to bid in that spring, so that you would have your contractor signed up before that June 30th.
Strangely, the county doesn't care about you signing up the contractor, it's not predicated on that. So it sounds like '26, calendar year '26 that we'd be talking about, because it's an offset to whatever we appropriate. They, they give you money at zero percent from that fund, but it has to be applied... applied for before June 30th, or else you default back to another years.
Are you talking about the Cape and Islands Trust money? Is that what, is that what you're referring to?
That's where the money comes from.
25% principal forgiveness, right?
That's where it comes from, yeah.
So that, I mean, that, that all comes through the SRF program. So you're going to, you know, you might be in a, it might not be.
No, I'm aware of that. I'm a representative. I'm just saying that the, the SRF has to be in place. The RUP has to be in place.
Correct.
And then you get to be able to apply. And I'm just trying to figure out in my head where that aligns in terms of what year we're getting that request in.
Your, that request is probably going to be in '26 when you're going in.
That's what it sounded like.
Starting construction. And so, you know, what I don't know is, does the, like, once you're on the, once you're on the intended use plan and you file the application in October and they accept that application and they, and you're still working through whatever, you know, items that they feel that you still need to submit, there, you're, you're pretty much a lock for that, that funding. You're not officially square with, you know, the SRF program until you've.
The SRF's still a state thing. I'm just talking purely the county because they, everything else has to happen prior to that.
I'm not sure I fully understa-
There's a separate application process to the county that is subsequent to those events. But all I wanted to do in my head is figure out, when could we actually expect to submit that request? And it sounds like '26, doesn't it, Joe?
I wouldn't imagine, you wouldn't be able to submit it until you, yeah, it'd have to be '26 because you wouldn't be able to submit it until you would actually know what the bid values were because you wouldn't know what the dollar amount was for the project.
And clear the state thresholds first, because we, we can't do that absent.
And I, and I guess I thought that they were doing it after you, but I could be wrong. I don't know enough about.
I'm just saying it's not automatic.
Yeah.
We have to apply proactively. So it's a process in and of itself. I don't want to lose out on, you know, what our share of funding might be. Dan and I used to talk about that incessantly.
Does it, but, you know. We, I guess we're monitoring that through, through the SRF process. You know, that, that, they do report on the principal forgiveness through, through that process. So how, you know.
This isn't, this isn't principal forgiveness. This is an augmentation. It's coming from the rooms tax that only Cape Cod was, was given, the opportunity to collect.
Okay.
And it's going through the Cape Cod Commission.
So it's not.
There is a management board that is in charge of this on Cape Cod. And it's, it's predicated on the SRF funding, but it is not that process.
But is it a function of, of money that you would be expending? Or is it a function of how much money you've actually spent? Because that's, that, that, if it's, if it's truly at, you know, money that comes back to you after you've spent it, then it's going to be through that.
It's, it's based on the bonding and a percentage of what they'll return to you because of that.
Would you mind providing some information through?
Yeah, sure.
To a manager, just so, I just want to make sure.
He's done this twice already. I mean, he's been good at submitting to the county. I mean, that's not, that's not the problem. This is a new project. I just want to make sure.
All right.
You know, since CDM Smith was involved with the other stuff originally, that.
So I, so I will say, I'm pretty, I think you're going to be covered, but I'd like to see what you're talking about, just to make sure.
It's just about milestones.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So looking at the vice chair, next week, we have a discussion with the finance director. And this is one of the topics we can talk about. Other funding sources, other applications, et cetera. Mr. Kin, Sheriff, may have experience with that as well.
Great.
Okay, great. I'll make a note.
Already noted, but thank you. You're my backup.
I'm sorry I missed that discussion.
Anyplace where we can get money.
Sorry, yes.
Okay.
Any other items?
Well, just to, to, it bears repeating, and I think with some folks present here tonight, and I, I do want to acknowledge Anne, if she's still here. Thank you. Yep. So I appreciated there, the Great Sand Lakes Association's eagerness and willingness and desire to have these meetings. I wasn't able to commit to the September meeting until we went through this, but we had, we, the town, have an obligation to also schedule with them on this project. And perhaps that would be late October, early November. Jeff, or?
It can be, yeah, it's whenever.
So we'll, we'll talk about that. And I'll have more information also, perhaps on the 16th of September.
Okay. You gotta go, you gotta go over there.
One question I have, I, I hear a lot about sewer and different streets and what have you. But at what point do we talk about a sewer treatment plan? The big money?
So I could speak to that. So.
Oh, good.
So, so going back to your, your active, your, your approved CWMP, the, the plan for the east side of town was to go to Chatham. And for the west side of town, there were a couple of options, one of which could be a treatment plant within the town. But the other option could be to go to a neighbor, a neighboring town like Dennis. Okay? So, you know, Dennis does not yet have a treatment facility. But I think once they do, the, the town could enter into discussions with them about potentially taking, taking flow. But having a treatment plan in town remains an option. It has to until, until that's sorted through, you know. So I don't know if that answers, does that answer your question?
Yeah, for now.
Okay.
So, Madam Chairs, if I could, because I think Jeff's about to surrender the, the hot seat. To, to close out the discussion on Great Sand Lakes, and I think going to what Alan was just asking about. So we had on earlier in your joint agenda, the re-phasing for the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan. And Dan and I actually never had the chance to talk if we were going to give a phase number to Great Sand Lakes. So generally speaking, I've been referring to it as Phase 3A. And that's only because the town does not presently have any plans in the works for Phase 4, et cetera, straight on. Dan and I talked about it at least over a year ago when we were contemplating that Phase 4. But there are so many unknowns that we're, we're finishing, if you will, Phase 3A, because that also, and correct me when I'm wrong, that is also, even though it's phosphorus abatement rather than nitrogen abatement with all the other projects, did I do that right? Kind of? It is all flow that is covered by our intermunicipal agreement with the town of Chatham. So I think there's been discussion over the years of making sure we, the town of Harwich, can send as much as we are paying for. That's where Great Sand Lakes also comes into play. So beyond that, everything else is to be determined.
Right.
And so, not that we're taking a break by any stretch of the imagination, but I would imagine board members, commission members, town meeting, all of us are going to want to know what else is coming down the road. And the ever important question, what's the cost?
Right.
And how can we ease those burdens on the town of Harwich?
Right. Thank you.
So that would be the end of Phase 3 and 3A for now, because as Jeff surrenders the seat, Mark gets to remain, because we save the best for last, the parliamentary discussion on policy creation on grinder pumps. And that was why Jeff patted Mark on the back. But if everyone's ready, that's the next item we would get to.
Yeah. No, that's good.
Oh, yeah.
So we're going to continue this discussion. So if you're gonna, any discussion needs to happen outside.
And as, as folks leave, if they're associated with Great Sand Lakes, the discussion on grinder pumps is related to anything with low gravity or low, low pressure, dang it. Low pressure, no gravity or little gravity. So this topic is critically important for those folks that went through Phase 2, those folks that are going through Phase 3, and anyone else in the future that may need to rely upon a grinder pump for their sewer system. Having said that, this is a topic specific to the select board, because you are the policy creating body of the town, as you know. In your packet, you have a reminder on your requirements for policy development. Mark and I worked, generally speaking, on the draft policy. We could consider this, if you want, as your first reading. But really, the next step would be looking at the grinder pump policy draft that you have. We also included the other topic on wastewater regulations, because as you know, the current sewer use regulations make reference to grinder, grinder pumps and all that. So at some point, the two documents are going to have to coordinate and coincide with one another.
You're right.
Having said that, the first item would be the draft grinder pump policy for discussion and debate.
Do you want to go over the, the need for grinder pumps? And so people understand in the public, the reason why they might be facing that?
So, so the, the initial need is in the Phase 2 area. There's less than 20 properties that were designed, that according to the design as it stands, or the construction as it stands, they're too low to be able to flow by gravity. So there are, you know, there are, like I said, less than 20 sites that are going to need this, need a pump. The plan would be for the town to procure those pumps. And, you know, we could put out, put out bid documents, you know, solicit pricing through a little bidding process and have the town purchase those pumps, collect them, have them temporarily and short term stored while the homeowners would come and collect those pumps for installation. So it's really the, that was really the driver for this, is the town needs to kind of get that process going. And so this policy would be the, the first step in that process.
And just for history, you know, back when we were in the beginning stages of this, we talked about grinder pumps and we talked about the cost. And we said that, that, you know, for those people who were going to need grinder pumps, it wasn't fair to put that burden on them, or others didn't have to deal with that. So we made a commitment to say that we would pay for those. And obviously, buying them and having the same specs and all of that makes sense and that we could get them, you know, at a cheaper amount, hopefully more than the homeowner could personally. So just again, to give that background, I don't know if the board has any comments currently on the policy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To your predecessor, I originally had said, I'm not real interested in making a lot of people take a hit for the team and the town, because there was some original design requirements that actually increased the grinder pump usage, because we didn't want to come up with municipal pump house. But to the extent we keep that minimum, I don't want to leave everybody with the impression that we're relieving them with all obligation when they get the grinder pump. We had that discussion that it wasn't fair to design the system so that even to hook up to it, you had to buy a grinder pump upfront. But this does not relieve you of the obligation to repair that at your own expense and/or replace it someday in the future at your own expense. This is for the initial installation of it.
That's correct, yes. And, and one of the, one of the items that we would look to enhance the sewer regulations would be to provide that kind of guidance that you're just, you're speaking of, as far as.
I just wanted everybody out there tonight to understand that this was something that we morally promised people to buy them the pumps, but it doesn't necessarily take them up from under an additional obligation that some of their neighbors might not have.
Well, and just to clarify, Don, it, it's more than, it, this, this does not include installation. This is the actual pump.
Yeah. But originally, there was a discussion about, oh, buy the pump and put it in yourself.
Right.
And we're trying to abide by what we promised.
Right. And I mean, the, the policy does specifically, you know, state that clearly that they will assume ownership of the system upon acceptance of the town. So it's on the policy, but.
So if, if I may, just to your policy first, because there, there can be any level of debate, but Mark and I were operating under your requirements for first reading.
Right.
Specifically, the policy says that during the course of first reading, the scope and purpose of the policy are the subject of debate. So if you're using this as your first reading, that's why we laid it out that way.
Yeah.
And I know in the regs for reference purposes, the sewer use regs, it starts on page 24, makes reference to a low pressure grinder pump. And then section 23 on page 35 goes into greater detail. So we'd need you folks to move forward on the policy. We'd be working with our partners over in Water Wastewater as to what they want for specs for operation. We have some funds available that we think may be sufficient for the, for the grinder pumps in Phase 2, but we know we're going to need more funding for additional grinder pumps going beyond that.
Would you need a motion to make this the first reading?
I don't know that, your policy doesn't require that. It's if you want to call this first reading. The reason I bring that up is you could have your second reading as early as next week or the week after. Or you could wait for the chair and do that later this month. So you can get this policy done fairly quickly.
Yeah.
I just.
It's your pleasure. Yep.
Thanks. Okay. So my concern is that this is, you know, kind of a very generalized policy. I did look through, not the, not in its entirety, but through the sewer regulations, I was concerned if we would have to make any amendments to sewer regulations. And from my initial reading, I didn't see that that was necessary. What does concern me is that we are now following the same pattern that we've done for our entire wastewater project. We have a general concept of what we're going to do. And then we, we say we all agree on that general concept and we'll kind of figure out the details later. I mean, this has implications, very serious implications, considering wastewater is a one-man department for how we handle the sign-off, the questions. We have no grinder pump expert in our organization. Storage, are the specs going to include a battery backup? Are the specs going to include a specific warranty to occur starting on installation as opposed to purchase? I mean, there is, there's many little things that will fall out of this policy. And looking at this, it looks so innocent. But it's not going to be. And in about two years, we're going to be saying, we need to have some more meetings to find out which department, does it fall under the select board? Does it fall under wastewater? I mean, actually, this is really out of construction money if we want to get technical, and I don't think we have to. But the main reason for doing this is to save construction costs. So this is an expense of construction, which I would say would be the select board. But you're not going to be taking in individual forms for the next 15 years.
Right.
And you have no experts of that nature either. So as much as we've wanted this to go forward, I kind of hate to see you okay your first reading tonight, because we'll be doing exactly what we've done with departments, with staff, with vehicles, with projects, with everything else all along the way. And I just heard several people saying they will do this or they will do that. I've got a terrible suspicion that they might be us, you know, and with our one and a half person. So, so I have to say, I don't really know how to go forward with this.
Well, let me ask, and, you know, I'm just one board member asking you, but I mean, does it make sense to take this base policy, bring it to your commissioners and, and to Jason and to start talking about what other specs you might like to see in it, so that we can sort of take it back at the, I don't know, say, the next two weeks or the end of the month?
Well, again, I have to say that we've kind of jumped to the inference that we would be running this.
No, right. And I'm just saying to get your input. But I think we need to start somewhere. We need to get a policy. So rather than just have this, like you said, it, it does look fairly innocent. So, you know, take it and, and look at it, say what more specifics you think might need to be included. Then it comes back to us so that we can look at that. And, you know, again, to Alan's point about collaboration and, and discussion, talk about it. Okay, well, this, this makes sense. Or maybe this is too in the weeds, but.
You know, and, and there may not be a single word that has to be changed
Right.
in the exact policy. But I feel this should be accompanied by a working document between our boards
Yeah.
to decide how these things go forward. Before you make it an official policy, and then a year and a half from now, when the first person comes in for a grinder pump, we say, Paul Noreen.
Right. Well, and in that regard, we have time.
Yeah.
We have time to
Just do.
technically come up with this policy.
No argument whatsoever with what's been said so far.
Yeah.
Mark and I have presented this because the board directed me to work with GHD, because we know we need to move forward on these topics.
Right.
There's nothing in here that would bind anybody going forward. There's nothing in here that would bind anybody going forward. You can call it first reading, you don't have to call it first reading. You have a policy on how policies get adopted.
Right.
Staff is not making any recommendations to you on that. That's your sacred authority. We also have been working with the liability release forms and all of that from council. So, we, Mark and I, are prepped to take this as far as you need us to, but we absolutely knew we'd be talking to John, to Steve, to Jason, and then to the commission on all the next steps.
Right.
I do think it's prudent, however, that we think of an appropriating article perhaps at the special for, to make sure funding's there to augment what Dan already put aside for the purchase of it. So, there's many, many steps to go from here.
Right.
But, you are now in your process as you've directed staff to do.
No, thank you. And I know that this policy about trying to hone in on it and get something official, we had to do the church and, you know, so...
If I could respond to Joe, I'm in total agreement. And, you know, this policy as it is, since I did check the sewer regs, if you want to go ahead with that as a first reading, that would be fine as long as, I'm so glad that I had a chance to express our feelings, which are that this can proceed no matter how many readings it goes through until we have a working plan
Right.
of who's going to be in charge of it, who's going to do it, where the staff will be.
Yeah, well, I think, and I'll look to the board, but I think it's, that we're not under a time constraint. It would be good to have you all be able to take some time and look at it and give any feedback and then bring it back to us because to everything we've just talked about, we have some time.
Right.
But it doesn't preclude us from going and putting that, you know, funding to move forward.
I have one tiny question. Is, in the future of specs, are you considering a battery backup?
So, when you say a battery backup on the, on the pumps or the...
Yeah, I heard that they exist.
I, I, so...
I will put on the record that I haven't thought about it at all.
Yeah, so, I mean, usually there's a generator hookup that can be provided.
Well, you'll have a generator pig tails, right?
Yeah, yeah, yes, correct.
And an insulated cover?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 insulated. So, you know, our plant, we would work collaboratively with your department on this. I mean, there's, this isn't the first one on the Cape. I mean, we've done a bunch of these in other communities, bid them out just like this.
You may not have done them with such a complicated governance system as this town currently has. And I don't think anybody will disagree with that. So, thank you.
Don?
Yeah, to follow up on Noreen, Madam Chairs, she's absolutely right in basically the divide, unlike other policies that we might be proving at the board level here, this one turns over something to another entity. We are the sewer authority for those people who weren't here at the very beginning of this process years ago. The Board of Selectman of the Year, the commencement process, we design them, we build them, but once they're operational, they're turned over to the Water Wastewater Commission. So, this is a clear situation where they have every right to understand what they're taking on as an obligation because they will be the ones that functionally operate it.
Right. Okay, so, do, is it the consensus? Yeah, go ahead.
But, could, so, Mark, you alluded to, this isn't the first time, you know, this has been done and no, I'm sure, is this the first time you helped develop a policy? Has your group historically helped develop the procedure that goes along with that policy? Because that's more or less what we're talking about, is the procedures that...
So, let me make sure I understand, like, to, like, to enhance the regulations?
No, no, no. So, we're developing a policy on the grinder pumps and so obviously the Water Wastewater folks are concerned that we're just going to dump this on their lap without a defined procedure created.
So, yes, we can certainly help with that.
Is it something you've done with others?
We have, yeah. So, I will say that this policy that you see there is similar to some others that you would see on the Cape.
Sure.
But they take different shapes and we'd be happy to certainly work with the Water and Sewer Commissioners on that.
And I go back to, I'm not sure that the policy needs to be modified. It's a corresponding procedure that goes along with it that defines who's responsible for what and how and where and when, and then we can put Noreen's telephone number on it.
She prefers texts.
Well put.
Madam Chairs, I'm leery to follow that. However, I will say that when Mark and I talked about this, we wanted to keep it simply to a draft policy, to acknowledge the regulations that exist. We didn't want to get into the procurement, the specs and all that because we felt that that was going to be a staff matter to start. And that's Jason and I, GHD, and anybody else we need internally and externally to help us with that.
Okay. Jeff, did you have anything?
I don't have anything, other than thank you for your input, Noreen. Spot on.
Yeah, and I think just in the, in the whole consensus of working collaboratively, like, let's give them the document, they can look at it, they can think about the questions they have before we just take any action. There's no need we have to take action tonight. Do other board members agree with that? Give a couple of weeks, let them take a look and...
If I could just say, rather than...
You gotta go up there, I know.
I mean, we have had a discussion about this, but we need input from engineers and from other people in other systems, so I wouldn't expect our board to come back with a list of things. We need other opinions and advice and things like that before we do so. Whatever we can set up to do that with the board, then we proceed.
Good. All right, that's good. All right, so then I think we can move on from this item.
Well, that means we move on from Mark and everyone at GHD, so, thank you, Mark, and everybody from GHD.
Thank you very much.
And thank you to the two public bodies for sure.
Yeah. And do you want to conclude your meeting?
I know they need to adjourn, yep.
Yeah.
Are you going to, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Great, thank you. And thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right, take care, welcome too. Does everybody leave for me? I guess we could just conclude.
Ready to just keep going?
Yeah, right?
Yes, moving along.
I mean, I don't see a reason why we couldn't, but I guess we need to... Amy, bear with us.
Who has the material on item B?
Item B is just what was in your packet on the...
Yeah, but who's speaking on it?
Amy.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, she's there.
Yeah, she's there. I mean...
Perfect, let's move forward.
Just waiting, I think we can. Let's just go, I don't know where...
Page 27, we definitely can.
Yeah, right? So, Amy, we're going to move forward on the discussion because the three of us are here.
Okay.
Want to just give the background, it's in our packet, but just to give the idea to the public what we're talking about.
Sure. So, the town, the Conservation Commission has care and custody of a approximately one-acre piece of land on Walther Road and it is for conservation purposes. And there were very, sorry, let me back up here a little bit. The past winter storms affected this property like it did many other properties on the Nantucket Sound side of Parwich. There was a historic set of stairs on this property that allowed people to walk from the field-like habitat that is the majority of the property down to the beach. There's been a set of stairs there for as long as I've been here. I don't know who erected them. I don't, yeah, I don't know how they came to be, but they were lost in this past winter's set of, set of storms. When they were lost, I did approach the maintenance department asking about replacement and they had stated that because it is a eroding coastal bank and it's very dynamic that they would want some engineering. Obviously, it would need approval from entities such as the Conservation Commission, et cetera, and then construction costs, which is not something that I had in my budget. So, upon further investigation though, however, I came, I looked at the deed, which I hadn't looked at for quite a while, and it said something that was a little concerning and it said that no structures shall be allowed on the property with the exception of a bicycle rack. It didn't, in any place in the deed, state that there were a set of stairs at the time of acquisition of the property or that the town needed to provide access to the water via this property. So, I wanted to bring that to your attention and administration's attention because there are several people from the public who, you know, very much are wanting a reconstruction of this set of stairs, but I would fear that it would be in conflict with the way the property was acquired and the way the deed was read.
Okay, thank you. Right. Yeah, so we have the, obviously, we have the deed in our packet and it does clearly state only a bike rack, so...
And Madam Chair, I hope you have in your packet not only the deed, but photographs that I took at your direction to investigate. And so, you can see that, you know, there's obvious, to a civilian, there's obvious erosion of a dune. I had never gone to that property before, so there was no evidence whatsoever of the staircase.
Right. Okay, did you, want to speak?
I was going to say ladies first, but Jean, why don't you go ahead?
All right, well, he was just saying how, there was a question, oh, Jean Barker from Walther Road. We purchased our house in January of 1980. So, when we first moved in, of course, Mrs. Jenkins was still alive and, you know, we met her and were able to speak with her and everything. And at that time, also, there was a, like a little beach gazebo, which the fire department at some point used for practice purposes, lit it on fire and that's no longer there. So, you've just got the lot and the stairs going down. The stairs have been there all of the time that we have been there. And, so, that was the first thing that I wanted to say.
Okay.
Yeah, we really want to know what's going to happen there.
Richard?
Good evening, Richard Waystack. I live on Neal Road, abutting Walther Road, and I walked the beach this week and we walk quite frequently. And with the stairs gone, we're seeing people sort of trying to trudge down the dune and it's creating a sluice way. So, in the heavy rains that we had last week, it's eroding much, much faster, that bank, than if there were a set of stairs there. And the stairs, I've been in that neighborhood about 30 years, same thing, those stairs have been there the entire time. If you've driven by there, she did not want another house built on that property. It was not the stairs, it was a house that she did not want erected there in keeping with sometimes neighbor issues. But she donated to the town, it's a beautiful piece of land, it's a beautiful beach, but more and more people just trying to walk down. Someone's put a board there to try to slide down and where it is now public property, I'm also concerned with people doing that, the liability of someone hurting themselves trying to slide down a board to get to the beach from the top of the dune. So, I would strongly urge the board and the Conservation Commission to look at replacing those stairs.
So, can I just ask you both, in terms of the alternative access, there's another public access?
There are two streets, Neal Road.
Yeah.
You run down the end of Neal, there is a small set of stairs going to Neal Road. But I encourage you, you've seen pictures from the town administrator, but to go take a look at it. Walk down Neal Road, walk over, but it's a probably 100, 120-yard walk over there. But look what's happening. Because those stairs have been there for so long, people are still trying to use what was the stairs to gain access to the beach. They're not using the alternative method of going over to Neal Road.
Yeah, understood. Go ahead, Pete.
Richard, do you know who typically uses those stairs, like, are the residents in the community or do people come and park there?
No, it's no parking.
Right.
Mr. Bukowski, it's there, it's walking, it's neighbors who are walking. Again, they've been using those stairs for years and years and years and it's a summer neighborhood, so there are some rentals there and people who have been renting there for years are doing the same thing. They don't know if they're on Walther Road, walk around to Neal Road to get to the beach. They're so used to walking across and there's a path down the hall, the lot itself, in the field, down to where the stairs are, and it's just inevitable. My concern is the liability for the town, number one, by not addressing it. Number two, a really, an acceleration of the dune being hammered by the rains like they were last week. You can see it. So, I would encourage anyone who hasn't seen it, feel free, drive down the end of Neal Road, we won't call the police to have you towed.
How can I drive?
Yeah, park and Jean's driveway and take a look. Jean?
The drop-off...
You gotta, yeah, go to the...
Oh, I'm sorry. The drop-off is also significant, you know, the amount that the stairs were letting you go down. So, people who are sliding down and all sorts of things to get down and...
So, I think, my question, do you...
No, go ahead, I'll wait for you.
So, my question on this is, is in terms of the deed itself and what it says, because unfortunately, it doesn't have the language in there and it's dated 1986, when it was recorded, it appears.
Probably when she passed away, I'm guessing, yeah.
Yeah, so, and, you know, I understand what you're both saying in the feedback. I would just say in terms of, based on what Amy has shared also about her concern about putting stairs back there and that we've even had the rec department tell us they don't want any more, I shouldn't say it was, rackets through, rec and DPW, they don't even want more benches on the beaches because of the different things that have gone on with the storms. But I think we would need legal to weigh in on whether or not we could put stairs back there based on the way the language is in the deed. That's, that's my feeling on that, just to make sure that we cover our bases for liability reasons and from the town perspective, but I look to other board members. Jeff?
Well, that was going to be my point and thank you both for being here, is does the Select Board have the right to modify a deed? And I don't know the answer to that and I think legal would be probably the next step, unless someone else can opine on this and give, give a, give an opinion.
I don't have a legal opinion, but I think if there were a set of stairs there when we accepted the deed, you know, back in 1986, then I think we're well within our rights to put a set of stairs back into place, but that's my, my non-legal hat.
Non-legal. Sold.
Don, did you have anything?
I agree with Pete, but I also am wondering, has anybody discussed the prospect of signage? If there's alternative access, I mean, why wouldn't we put a sign up saying, "Please use the Neal Road access"?
And in between there, there's a private, a home that has a private beach. So, now you're saying to the people, "Go down Neal Road, go across this private beach to get to this..."
Well, it's not private at the moment.
Just, if I can, Madam Chair, we have, you know, government regulations, policies, et cetera. Then we have reality. What's going to happen if no stairs are put there, people are going to continue to use a board, they're going to create their own stairs on that dune, they're going to continue coming. You could put a sign that says, "Do not enter, use alternate means, go to Neal Road", which is fine. Reality is, they're going to continue to use it and the erosion, and if I were the neighbor next door, and I've got pictures from this weekend, that erosion has now impacted the neighbor whose property is on the market at $6 million because the acceleration of that erosion is impacting his seawall. So, you're right, we can look at the legalities of it, we can look at the policies of it, but people are going to use that access and it's going to be, if someone gets a splinter sliding down that, that board, why did the town allow that and not replace the stairs?
Yeah, hold on, let me just go to Joe. Joe, go ahead. Did you, did you have...
If the board member was looking for an answer to the question, you would ask if anyone had looked at it.
Well, somewhat rhetorical, but...
That's fine. I'll yield the rhetorical question.
Well, did you see a sign, additional...
No, when, when the conservation agent brought it to my attention and I inspected it, my concern presently is not with a stair or anything like that. My concern presently is with an ongoing liability issue. So, if there's a board, that board's illegal. If they're accessing it inappropriately, that's illegal. So, the town and my concern is already exposed to... So, the town, and my concern, is already exposed to liability. So, the Conservation Director and I have talked about what actions, if any, should we have taken or take. We didn't want to do anything over Labor Day weekend, knowing that you were gonna talk about this. But there is a, so however long the stairs may have been present and then destroyed, once they were destroyed, there was an ongoing liability for the town that gives me grave concern. So, whatever you may decide on the engineering and everything that goes into stairs or anything else, the town should act immediately to try to get away from an existing great liability.
Well, that was gonna be my follow-up question to Amy, is in terms of the current situation, the way it is, and understanding this sort of a decent drop-off. Amy, what were your thoughts on that, in terms of addressing those issues?
In terms of for safety?
Yes.
In the meantime, I would say doing temporary signage, alerting people to the danger of a steep coastal bank drop-off there, and that they should use alternative access, at least for the time being, until the town makes a decision and moves forward, or whether it's a permanent decision or not, but directing them to the alternative access. There's really nothing structurally that can be done at the time, at this time, to shore up that area. It is a naturally eroding coastal bank. The erosion is somewhat exacerbated by heavy precipitation that happened, but also by the harsh structures that are both on the east and west of this property, that when we do get storm events like we did in the wintertime, the velocity funnels into this area, as it is not a protected structure, our coastal bank, because it doesn't have a structure on it. It's really not afforded the ability to have any shoreline stabilization of it. But in the meantime, I would say some signage, even some symbolic fencing, potentially to keep people or dissuade people from using that as an access to the beach.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. As it sits right now, I'm inclined to vote in support of putting back the stairs. I'm wondering if there would be an opportunity to speak with legal, to see if anything like this has ever been done before by a board, and then bringing it back on September 16th.
I don't know if we're gonna have sufficient time to get legal to weigh in, but we can try.
It's worth a try.
So.
For me, Madam Chair, is, remains the ongoing.
Yeah, I think.
Exposure to liability.
I think that, I think Amy's items that she's just listed about signage, and also putting up some sort of, you know, symbolic fence for now, until we get an answer on whether or not we can even proceed. So, I would like, I would like legal to weigh in, because I don't want to violate a deed. And, you know, I understand the stairs were there, but if the person who's no longer here said, well, you know, someday those stairs will be gone, and I don't want anything but a bike rack, or, you know, how do you even know back then what it was gonna look like today, so.
Madam Chair, I'm, just a quick question. You mentioned a temporary fence. Is that what I just heard?
Yeah, I'm, well, I'm saying, you know, Amy said symbolic fencing, meaning it's not anything that could go hardcore into the ground, but maybe, like, what comes to mind is the orange fencing.
Yeah, but you're still in violation of the deed.
I know, I know.
Where it says temporary or permanent.
Yeah, but if I could, Madam Chair, we're getting too deep into the weeds here. This now becomes a safety issue, right?
It's a safety issue.
The deeds are relevant at this point, if you have people that could get harmed on town property going over the edge. So, the town has to do what's in their best interest, which is to either put up some signage and/or fencing to protect not only the individuals that could be going there, but the town in general. So, again, I think it needs a larger conversation, and if you wanna go to legal, I'm fine with that, but I mean, I am inclined to support new stairs. But I think the overall point is, sooner than later, we need some signage up there. It may be a little stronger than we suggest, no offense, Amy, but it should be a little stronger than we suggest. It should be that it's prohibited for the time being.
Right, exactly, and I think that's what Amy's intimating. And the only other thing about that is, you know, we can say we're not supposed to do that per the deed, but to your point, there's a liability issue, but on top of that, there's, you know, DEP and all of that that can override anyone wanting to put stairs in on a coastal bank. I mean, if you were a homeowner trying to put in new stairs, and, you know, you don't have the ability through DEP and conservation, you're not gonna get a permit for those stairs, and the town can't supersede those regulations.
So, Madam Chair, and I appreciate the comments of the, everybody, certainly prior speaker. The town looks at this whenever it occurred, the town is looking at this as storm-damaged land. The comments about actions needed to be taken by the town based on storm-damaged land is abundantly clear to us. I appreciate the Conservation Agent making reference to symbolic. For me, it would be storm fencing that we had to use after the tornado.
Right.
Whatever measures the town can take to alert the public that there's a danger that exists, then what I heard is we can certainly, and I'll let Amy know tonight, that she has authority to go to council tomorrow.
Right.
To seek interpretation of the deed, and then to the question on if the board wants to do the stairs, it is merely the matter of funding. We don't have any for the engineering work and for the construction work that would need to take place.
Right.
So, it may not be insurmountable, but it does not exist yet. So, I could continue to work with staff, in this case, Public Works, to say, okay, you said you needed engineering, and you said there was a significant construction cost, let's quantify that and move the discussion forward. So, I think we capture everything in the short term.
Right.
We've protected the public on a storm-ravaged piece of property that is a danger. We're contemplating the engineering design and construction of stairs, if that's the way the town wants to go going forward, and in the meantime, we'll find out if we're even able to do that based on the deed.
Right. I think that's the most comprehensive way we can go. Yeah. You agree?
Do something, despite the deed, put a temporary fence. I've got grandkids, we walk down there a lot, I don't want them jumping off that dune.
No.
You know, and I don't care how symbolic, do it 10 feet, 20 feet, whatever. But I just look at, if this were one of the other major beaches, if it were Grayak Road or one of these other ones, and they lost those stairs, this room would be packed. We're in an area that there are not as many residents, a lot of them have gone home already, but it's important to that neighborhood. But please do something immediately, put up the storm fence, I don't care what the deed says. And when it comes to legal counsel, we'll be back to visit with you again.
Yeah, perfect. Great. Thank you. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
So, we're not gonna, you know, obviously, there's more work to be done, so we don't need any kind of official motion. Town Administrator has, Amy has her info, so.
The only thing I'd add, Madam Chair, if there is a bike rack, perhaps we remove it, to encourage.
Ironically, there is not, right?
I didn't see one, Amy. Is there a bike rack?
There's not a bike rack there.
Thank you, yeah, yeah. I saw nothing other than a rope saying, do not drive, drive over this, yeah.
Okay, thanks. All right, so we'll go on to old business. Can I get a motion on item A?
Item A, vote to approve the appointment of Eric Kincher as the interim Finance Director and Town Accountant effective September 4, 2024.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
If I can, so, I had a conversation with Joe, and I don't know if it was an email or a text, but either way, Joe and I touched base on this. My only comments, and I'll just share them with the board, although I tend to lean with Joe's thought process, is I offered up the thought of adding, I'm trying to find it, that's why I'm delaying. I offered up a thought of adding a number four to Article Five, which is the contract termination, and this is the termination essentially that's agreed upon in advance, and with a 10-day written notice, as opposed to a termination for cause. So, my only recommendation at the time was if we were to contract with a new town administrat- I'm sorry, Finance Director. So, if we hired, I guess, not contracted, if we hired a new Finance Director, I guess it is a contract, then we'd add that clause. But Joe, which I think he's right, it's pretty much implied, right? That if we hire that person, then our current interim understands that.
Right, and if I may, there's two points to be made here. First, this is a 30B contract for supplies and services, so we're hiring a vendor to do a service. The employment agreement would be completely separate, negotiated directly between the board and that person, and yes, the incumbent, should he be renewed tonight, understands that the moment we have a Finance Director Town Accountant under agreement, his contract is gone. I think he relishes that day.
Right, right, probably so.
But I appreciate the commentary, because it does have me thinking about other such documents going forward. So, I do appreciate that.
And I said, I appreciate your back and forth with it, so I'm comfortable with it, but I just wanted to share that with the board.
Thank you. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joe and I share the contracting thing as part of our DNA, but it does have a termination-for-convenience language in it, which is a whole harmless. Either party can terminate for convenience without any kind of liquidated damages, so it's already covered.
Yeah, I just think that was a 30-day term, right, as opposed to the 10, but either way, I'm.
Yeah, either way, but the point is that there's no redress, nobody can actually go back to somebody else and say that you caused harm.
Right, agreed.
Okay, so we get a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
4-0. Item B?
Item B, approve the photographic consent agreement between the town of Harwich and Marina I LLC.
Second. Are you okay with that?
And I do know that our, there he is.
Yep, John's on.
He shall arrive. Our harbor master has been waiting patiently throughout this entire meeting.
He'll be drinking a lot of coffee.
Good evening.
Good evening, John. Well, we talked about this prior, and I don't know if it was two weeks ago or the last meeting we had. And is there any other concerns with the contract, or is there any other discussion anyone wants to have? Or are we ready for?
Madam Chair, I'll just, obviously, I'll thank John for his time on this. John, again, I wasn't trying to put anybody through hoops on this. I wasn't trying to delay what appears to be a very good tool for the boaters to use. I just really had a concern with the way the partner in Marina was written and underlined. I appreciate the clarification, and clearly, between your email correspondence, that's something we can keep in our records, you know, if and when we ever need it down the road. But again, thank you for your time on this, John.
Yes, sir. No problem. Thanks.
Don, sorry.
Madam Chair, based on Pete's comments last meeting, I've got the one concern. I mean, are we clear with this, that it's not an exclusive agreement, that if some other company wanted to offer an app that's analogous to this, that they would have the ability to do the same exact thing?
Yes, there's nothing that prevents the town of Harwich entering into any other kind of agreements of any sort whatsoever regarding our property.
That's my major concern. Okay.
There's no hesitation whatsoever.
Okay, so, ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
4-0.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Did John look at the sheet?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, John, I'm sorry.
Don't leave yet, John.
John, did you get a chance to review the updated waterways committee charge?
Madam Chair, I did. I sent a revision, and then I also was sent by Mr. McCaskill, our liaison, the comments that Mr. Makarsky sent. And I reviewed them, I have no concerns with his recommended change to the scope and procedure. So, again, it's your charge to the committee, so I'm fine with it, and I think we should move forward with it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other comments by board members on the charge?
I was gonna say, the reason I touched base with Selectman McCaskill on this really just had to do with the first, I guess, the second word or the first sentence in the charge that we saw during our last meeting. And I was concerned with the term when directed by the Select Board of the Harbor Master, as opposed to them having the ability to create their own agendas and schedule their own meetings. And so, the language I used there actually is, I won't say it mirrors, but it's very similar to the latest golf charge that Jeff put forward. So, I think it much better aligns to what we have in other charges.
Okay. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree, but I also, I mean, and Michael's addressed this, I was concerned that it made no mention at all of Harbor Management Plan, and that's really the original draft. That's a really important thing that the committee has to pick up, and irrespective of what it's in here or not, they shouldn't be sitting around waiting at a phone to see if they can get instructions about it. It's an ongoing obligation, and it has been for years.
And it does state that they.
Yeah.
They ought to review it.
And that's in there now, so.
I move that we approve the updated waterways committee charge as presented.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
And I guess for the record, Michael did respond to administration staff that he was also in agreement with it, so.
The goals and objectives, that was just the, we don't have to vote this. That was just the updated, the missing language. So, I think everything was captured. I don't know if you got a chance to review it, but if we're good with it. The info that was on your sheet that we had voted, Pete, was added. There was a couple of lines, and I think it was from the spreadsheet.
Yep.
That just kinda got lost. I know that I found a couple of other words that I made sure got added, too. So, that's the updated one, unless there's any other changes, then we can just agree that that's the updated one we've already voted, and unless there's any other comments.
My only comment, it has to do with the comment that, or the question that Selectman Handler asked a week or so ago, is, so, I believe it was referenced that these are in effect. So, have you had the opportunity to sit with Joe and go over these and get his feedback on any of these, or?
So, no, because the last conversation was to clean them up, and then we talked about, we as a board also coming up with criteria in terms of how those would be any, you know, related to Joe and any kind of review, so that we would come up with a similar kind of simple list.
Yeah, and even if they're not part of a performance review, there would still be goals and objectives put forth.
Yes.
So, I just, I guess I'll leave it as, I assume you'll schedule that conversation with Joe at some point.
Yeah.
And the follow-up with the board as to any feedback. And to your point, maybe there's a few that need to still be identified, because there's probably a few that are really ours and not Joe's. So, anyway.
So, I think, yeah, a sit-down conversation. I just wanted to make sure we got the items that were not, you know, that were missing in there.
And the reason I ask, obviously, is because on some of the financial things, the actual goal or objective is, the clock has already started, so.
Right.
Clearly, some of it's time-sensitive, not that it's, you know, gonna make or break things, but it's somewhat time-sensitive.
And you'll see that the draft agenda that's for next week, when I'm not here, there's a lot of items on there that will be updated, that are included in that.
Okay, okay, good. Excellent, thank you.
Sure. Any other discussion on that? So, like I said, we've already voted these, so that's just a cleaned-up version, so then we can go to contracts.
Madam Chair, in the interest of time, item A, contracts, approve the following 2024 Community Preservation Act grant agreement as presented.
Thank you. Just give me a second.
Second.
Moved in second.
On A only.
Yep.
Correct, yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
4-0.
Item B, approve the 2023 Community Preservation Act agreement with Penrose LLC for Leans Cape Cod 5 Housing Project for $100,000.
I'll second.
Yeah, oh, go ahead, well, go ahead, because I have some background on that.
I'll let you go. Maybe you'll answer it.
So, you know, Dave Nixon had originally had some questions on this. I made sure that I went to Katie Klein to make sure that any kind of language change in here that occurred to draft the CPC agreement was acceptable, and that there was no problem in it, and there isn't. And so, Katie indicated that they had reviewed, the language was changed by the, some of the language, I should say, was changed by the developer because of the way they have to structure this. And originally, when talking with Dave a while ago, he thought he had an issue with it going from a grant to a loan, that happens all the time, he understood it now. And then initially, he thought he had a problem with a. And then initially, he thought he had a problem with a, a name change, but that again, it happens all the time per project under the Penrose and below. So, I just wanna make sure everyone's aware of that information. So, sorry, Don?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm still uncomfortable with them presenting us with changes to our document and, there's a difference between an annihilation agreement where they just changed something or, or actually submitting in the name of whatever LLC or corporation that they're requesting the money for. Uh, I'm just curious why they wouldn't have requested it in the manner that they wanted to receive it, rather than waiting for the, the grant contract to come through and then lining it out and revising it.
My understanding from Katie is that a lot of times when these are first drafted, then they have to go in and individualize it, so I don't necessarily know that both things can happen simultaneously when they're applying for the CPC, um, when they're submitting their CPC application. So, so, go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, my, my question, uh, Joe, maybe you can help me with this one. At the CPC meeting, uh, I'm sorry, not at the CPC meeting, Penrose was the responsive bid or they were awarded the bid, but then if I remember right, sorry, go ahead.
Completely different project, unrelated to the matter before.
Different project. Thank you. So, this is not.
Correct.
Okay.
This is the Orleans Ops Center, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah. Say, I'm sorry?
The Orleans Ops Center.
Got it. Thank you. I was, one, okay, thank you.
So, Madam Chair, if I could.
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
Because I appreciate comments from the board, I just wanna emphasize, um, I believe this was transmitted directly to your chair by the CPC chair, so the staff hasn't worked on this, um, per se. My question would be, do we know who changed the dates in the document itself? Because we would have insisted that somebody initialized them. And then I have a follow-up. It may not matter for the execution of this, but, um, I think you'll see, this is a rather old grant agreement.
Yeah, so I can only tell you that the original was handed to me by the chair of CPC, Dave Nixon, and so the question, I, I assume the date change was Dave, but you're right, it should be confirmed.
And if I may, my concern is, you can see that the grantee has signed it. They've done so, um, in what appears to be blue ink. The changes to the contract date itself were made in black ink. The funding goes back to 2022 Annual Town Meeting, and there were no other changes, uh, whereas it talks about the project must commence by January 31st of 2024, so, little bit funky, but.
Right.
Nothing that should cause you to not, and I guess this is the one to sign, sorry, to execute.
Well, and I, at that, again, we can just confirm with Dave, but he did hand that to me, because I specifically asked if it was the original, and that staff hadn't gotten it yet.
Generally speaking, with these grant agreements, and I, and I apologize because I know we were trying to get through A and B real quick, um, item A is a document that was created, uh, several years ago, uh, by Mia's town administrator working with the chair of CPC and council. So, we have this standing grant agreement with their language and all of that. The particulars are then filled in by CPC on your behalf to give to the grantee. So, um, the fact that, you know, I know that the chair and I, sorry, the CPC chair and I talked about this several years ago, because I inquired, why is this, why is this languishing? Why haven't they taken the funds? Be that as it may, it's not our standard operating going forward, so I want the board to be aware of that.
Right, and just to, to add another bit to that is like I, in December, I remember that, you know, things were circulating and I ended up getting involved to make sure that everybody was getting their information to make sure that this, the document, not the closing, but.
Right.
Forward, so.
Hence the December 2023 date.
Right.
Yep.
And what Joe's saying kinda dovetails with what I'm saying, is I, I, I get what Katie Klein's up to, in that we have, we can accept this legally. It, it's not that we must accept this, and I'm, I'm concerned about creating any kind of, you know, moving forward, any kind of baseline where it looks like anybody gets one of these grants agreements can start lining them out and changing them on us.
Well, I think the Red River Agreement is tweaked to that too, because there's another entity involved. If you look.
Right, the town was aware of those changes and didn't object.
So, they're not always uniform. They have to be, they have to be tweaked depending on the nature of how that, it's not, they're not all straightforward, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
But they took forever to do this, and, and to the point where they had to change dates, there were milestone dates, because they couldn't possibly reach them, they were behind them. This is not the way I think we should go moving forward, go, do business.
Well, I think we need to be careful, because if we have certain grant agreements in a, in a one format, which is awesome to have something uniform, but at the same token, when, when you look at the Red River, um, Agreement, there's different language in their tweet to.
The difference is it went through them. It, I, I feel a lot more.
Sorry, who do you mean, when you?
This was vetted through.
Who's them?
The administration. I mean, I, Penrose should have, it, it, I, I think it should follow.
Back in December.
They did. They did went through the.
As your chair said, right.
They, they went through the whole process, because I got looped into that, because I think something was out of town or something.
Wasn't it at that juncture that they changed?
Somebody had ours.
The name, though?
Dave, Dave didn't understand why they had changed the name, and Katie specifically said that happens all the time. Penrose is like the umbrella.
Right.
The names, it's like when you buy a property, if you have multiple.
Well, I, I get that, that cell tower is changed names like forever.
LLC, so they had to create another entity, which required the documents to be tweaked to reflect the appropriate entity.
I guess my question is, why is it almost a year after the fact?
That's what I'm saying.
It only, it, it's, it's really not a year after the fact. That only got circulated for the final in, in December, where they were actually, I don't wanna use the word closing in the sense of money change hands, because it didn't, but that's what was going on.
No, understood, but I'm saying, semantic, nine months after the fact, why is it nine months after the fact?
To get the CPC agreement in front of us?
No, well, I, I suppose it was.
Yeah, no, I think that's a question for CPC.
Yeah, that's a, Dave Nixon.
All right. Well, that's what I, I want, I'm not, I'm not gonna support this tonight. Um, I, I'd like to have a little bit of information.
Did I miss that?
I don't.
There was a motion.
There was a motion.
I missed that, sorry.
Motion and a second, and then I opened with, or with discussion, so we have not.
Who moved in second?
I seconded it.
It was probably my motion based off of.
I think it was Pete's motion, my second.
Whatever way you want.
Yeah, if I could help the board, because I didn't mean to sort of create a conflagration. Here are the facts as we know them. Tell me, uh, the, um, they applied, CPC supported it, town meeting approved it, um, it is the grant amount for the purposes stated to, um, um, some level of the entity that applied. Typically, if CPC doesn't have an objection, we wouldn't. What I mean to suggest is, I was not privy to this for this meeting. That's not to suggest that it's untoward, and I, and I do know, working through your chair, that I did read all the comments from council.
Yeah, and, and I don't wanna say it's untoward either. My point is, you know, is like, I'm gonna put my signature on this, and John can, can detest. I, I go through these things because my signature's going on it as part of this collective body, but it clearly talks about, you know, that it's a project commenced by January 31, 2024. Um, and, and perhaps the project has commenced, but I don't have any material with this stating such. Um, I, I don't understand to, back to the, why it's just crossed out and dated September